Welcome to the Town Council meeting for Monday, April 13th. I call this meeting at 7:00 PM. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And you may know by now that at this point, I would normally ask someone to stand up. It could be an athlete, someone who's accomplished something within the community, a Girl Scout troop, Boy Scouts, any number of folks to lead us. But obviously, we're in a different format tonight. And so instead of being able to have someone live, we in fact have an opportunity to recognize a lot of our great first responders here within our community. And so we have compiled together tonight a special Pledge of Allegiance led by members of the Wakefield Police Department, members of the Wakefield Fire Department, and our frontline healthcare personnel that has been helping us through this crisis. So with that, and with much thanks to WCAT, I'll turn it over to our real heroes here in our community. All right, thank you, WCAT, for putting that together. We'll also be sure to have that available online as well, so people can take a look at that. And I know I speak on behalf of the entire Town Council, the entire town, to thank our first responders and our first line healthcare professionals for all that they're doing every day to help us get through this pandemic. So thank you for that. Item number three is the attendance. And I believe that we have all seven councils in attendance. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Yes, I do see that everyone is present. So with that.
Yes, present.
Thank you. With that, our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first is the March 23rd, 2020 minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved, Ann Santos.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos. Seconded by Counselor Dinoco. All right, as with all votes, we'll have a roll call vote for this. So Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Aye.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, 7-0, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item 4B, approval of the April 6, 2020 Town Council Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Counselor Dinoco.
Aye.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Aye.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Aye.
Counselor Butt.
Aye.
And Counselor Donbrowski, 7-0, that motion carries. Item number five on the agenda is public participation. This is the opportunity for members of the public to offer up any comments or concerns that they may have before the Town Council. If necessary, we can add that to a future agenda. With that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public participation for this evening?
No, Chairman, you have everything that I have, which is Joe Pride and Chip Tarbell is on with us also.
Right, so with that, I'll first turn to Mr. Tarbell. If you could just identify yourself, provide your address, and then the floor is yours, Mr. Tarbell. If you could just unmute.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to still be able to participate even in this interesting world that we're now living in. Having done one of these meetings last week for the ZBA, I know how challenging it is to get it done, but I'm happy that things are still moving forward. I'm here tonight to speak both personally and for the zoning board of Wakefield, Mr. Chairman. I was selected at our last meeting to speak on behalf of item 12, which is committee member reappointments. And we actually have two standing reappointments this evening from the board, Amy Wall and Dave Hatfield. So the board, Greg McIntosh, Mike Feely, Tom Lucy, Joe Pride, and Jim McBain asked me to speak tonight in regards to these two appointments. I'd like to start with Amy Wall, if I could. Amy has been on the board for a number of years now and adds a really unique perspective to many, many of our things that we do. So she's, you know, been a Wakefield resident all her life. She cares about Wakefield and she cares about how Wakefield's moving forward. And as I think you know, on the ZBA, with all the development that's happening and all the different things that are happening, it's really important to have somebody that has that perspective as being a Wakefield resident her entire life. And she does a great job bringing us forward in that aspect. Her thoughtfulness is often extremely important. And quite frankly, and I don't mean to be sexist at all, she is the only woman on the board. And I think it's great to have a mix. I wish there were more that would apply, but she's really done a great job. I then come to Dave Hatfield. Dave is our chair and does an outstandingly great job at being chair. Mr. Chairman, you know how tough it is to kind of keep everybody on the rails at times. And Dave does a wonderful job doing that. He's quiet, reserved. However, when needed, he can really bring us back in line. He's extremely detail oriented, and as chair of the board, he often has to write many of the decisions. So that detail orientedness often comes in handy. I know that he takes great pride in being chair and does a wonderful job on it. And I think as you look at these two reappointments, it's important to think of how does the board interact altogether? How does the board interact with the public? And how does the board, you know, look at all the things we have to look at? And quite frankly, in these times, as we do Zoom meetings and whatnot, it would be hard to disrupt and bring somebody on board. I mean, we need to know Mass General laws with all the zoning bylaws and everything that takes place. So it'd be difficult to add new members at this time. And when you talk about new members, we actually have three new members on the board within, I think it's the last year, Greg McIntosh, Mike Feely, and Joe Pride. So our board is pretty well mixed between us, I guess, old timers and starting to get some youth and young Wakefield people involved. So to that sense, I would hope that you would, right off the bat, just reappoint these two. As some have said to me, it's kind of a no brainer. There would be no reason that I could find that either of these two should be asked not to serve any longer.
Oh, I think. Thank you, Mr. Tarbell. And this is new technology to many of us. And I would just ask that everyone please mute your portal if you haven't already, so that we don't have background noise. It's just really important. And obviously, when you're recognized to speak, if you could unmute, that would be most helpful, but it would be much appreciated if you could please do that. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Tarbell, for that. So next submission of public comment was made via email. And this email was submitted by Mr. Joe Pride, 489 Lowell Street. And he writes, "I would like to be on record as for extending Dave Hatfield and Amy Wall for the next three years. I know I'm a new member to the board, but it would be a shame to replace them with others with less experience. They both have added tremendous knowledge and devoted a great deal of patience when overseeing all of these cases. Dave has run these meetings with great high standards with Amy right there on his side. And when there was a time Dave could not attend, Amy took the bull by the horns. I'm not sure you can add that much talent from such strangers off the streets. Like I said, as a member of the board with only one year, this is what I have observed best Joe Pride." So with that, I believe that concludes public engagement for this evening. Unless, Madam Clerk, we have anyone else?
No, Chairman, that concludes, we are all set.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Tarbell, for your comments. And thank you as well for this mission, Mr. Pride. The appointments will be coming up later on in the agenda. Next, before we get onto the next item on the agenda, I understand that there was some background noise from one of the participants during the Pledge of Allegiance. And so WCAT has queued that up again. And I think it's really important that we recognize again the heroes within our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to WCAT to rerun the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all.
Again, thank you very much to our participants for that and for their tireless and heroic work every day. We truly appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is item number six, COVID-19 updates. This unfortunately has become one of the standard parts of each of our meetings because there's so much going on and so much information during this unprecedented time. I did want to provide just a few updates and then turn it over to Mr. Mayo for some additional comment as well. As of this morning, Wakefield has 115 positive cases for COVID-19. And I'll remind everyone that that is considerably more than we had just a week ago, when we had 46 cases that we were reporting as a community. The governor spoke as recently as this afternoon, talking about the fact that we're heading into a very difficult time, likely over the next couple of weeks. And certainly, Wakefield is not immune from what we're seeing statewide and nationwide. So our thoughts and prayers are certainly with all of those who have tested positive, who undoubtedly may test positive in the coming days and weeks, and all of those that are currently in treatment. And the surge just has begun here, and we do expect that that will be the case for the remainder of this month at a minimum. With that said, we cannot stress enough that the most important thing that we can all do in playing our part is social distancing. It is absolutely key to stopping the spread. And in addition, the CDC has recommended making face coverings. These are not hospital-grade masks. These are, you know, anything that you can make out of fabric, for example, a bandana, anything of the sort. It helps to contain the spread. It helps you, it helps the people around you in the event you find yourself having to have any sort of social interaction. But again, those interactions should be at a bare minimum, only or essential interactions, and at least six feet apart. Another important piece to this is that the data is showing that many of the people testing positive for COVID-19 are younger. And in Boston, for example, nearly 40% of the cases in the city of Boston are people under the age of 40. And that's significant. At first, there had been a lot of talk about this being focused primarily on the elderly, and certainly, they remain some of our most vulnerable, but it's not exclusively for them. So I just plead with everybody on behalf of our town to please, regardless of your age, recognize that this is real, recognize it can be impacting you directly, recognize no one is immune from this. And the impacts to it can be anything from something very mild to something deadly. And we just don't know. There's candidly no rhyme or reason in many cases. So we just plead with you to please heed our advice. And one of the other issues that continues to be an issue in town is people taking face masks and discarding face masks and plastic gloves in the streets, in parking lots. Parking lots are not trash cans, please. It's not just littering, it's potentially spreading a virus. And it makes no sense to take any action like that when we're trying to get a handle on this. So please, for the sake of everyone, including yourself, please make sure that we don't see, you know, masks and gloves blowing around our streets. I will turn it over to Mr. Mayo, who has an update relative to the progress we've made with cutting off the parking around the lake and also some emergency fund updates as well. So with that, Mr. Mayo, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, not only do we have, you know, well over 100 cases in Wakefield now, but we also think we have five deaths from the COVID-19. And I say think because I feel there's more, but, you know, the paperwork isn't done, the causes hasn't been told yet through the autopsies and what have you. So there are a number of deaths, and I don't think any family has been touched by this. We have members of the Town Council whose families have suffered. We have Town Hall employees whose families have suffered. So this is a real horrible disease. So one of the most important things we can do is to socially distance and to limit your time outside. And when you do go outside, you know, for walks and are at the grocery store and you need to do those things, you should be wearing a mask. Again, they aren't the N95s that our hospital and first responders will wear, but you should wear a mask or a bandana. And to that end, the town will be receiving, or will be bringing in, 10,000 masks, not the N95 grades, but a lower grade. And we will be working out a distribution for people that can't access masks. So look for that over the next few days. We would like to target people that are older because they are more susceptible, and we will do some staggering with that. So when we get those in this week, we'll be figuring that out. So stay tuned, and I really thank you to our Emergency Management Director and Health Director for getting the ball rolling on that. Regarding the parking around, or the lack of parking around the lake, that has really limited the numbers that have been enjoying our lake in common. And I noted this weekend, the numbers were much better, much more spread apart. We've had great cooperation with some of the local businesses for their private lots. And I think you'll see barrels and screening out there, and a great job by our DPW doing that. However, I will tell you this, that over the weekend, we did issue 75 parking tickets for people that just feel that they are above the law, that it doesn't apply to them. I don't buy any argument that I will get that they didn't know about it. So that's just my position on that because I see some of them parked right near where the big message board was. You had to maneuver around it to get there. So really, this is for your own safety. We're not doing this just to have fun. On a brighter note, we have over $17,000 in donations to the emergency fund. The online portal will be open soon. We got a little bit of issues with the bank there on that. And we have about eight or nine applications. And what I was thinking, and I'd be looking for some guidance from this on the councils we go forward, and with Town Council Mullen, that's quite a bit of money. I'd like to distribute some of it to the food pantry because I think every dollar we go there will turn into $4. That might be a great help in getting food for people. And also like to think about whether the cards for the community could be part of that as well. So we can be discussing that as we go on. I think one of the success stories that we did have was securing rooms at the Colonial for our first responders that had come in contact with the coronavirus, had been exposed, and were afraid, or not afraid, but were wary about going back to their families. We did secure rooms for them while they got tested, and so they weren't exposing their family to this. We had three of our police officers exposed. One of them lived alone, so they went back to their home. The other two did use the Colonial. They were tested, and I'm so happy to say that all three tested negative for the coronavirus. They're back at work, but I do appreciate the council's support in having that because having that availability meant the world to our first responders. And I've heard a lot from some people around us in other towns that are saying, "How did you guys do this?" I said, "Well, we just, we worked forward and we decided that was a good thing to do." The chair touched on the littering, and I can't tell you how disappointed I am in people that just feel they could litter everywhere. I did talk to Town Council Tom Mullen today. He may have something to add about this later on when he talks about some other things to see what we can do to enforce this. I don't have people that can run around and chase people for littering, but maybe if we do set a few examples, things will change. Last thing I wanted to point out, I do get some calls about construction that's going on. And do you remember that construction is, to a certain extent, an essential activity? And particularly when it's a public utility. But I am happy to report that National Grid should be off the street, off the public ways this week as they button up that last job on Salem Street where they had to jack and bore under the river there. It was a big job. The rain today didn't help, but they should be out of there in the next few days, and that street should be, you know, kind of paved to a, you know, to a work condition and then back to normal. So that's where we are. Our people are working very hard. I can't thank our first responders enough, DPW, the people that come in Town Hall every day to keep the government going. Business is still happening. We're still getting people requesting building permits. Had to spend some time today with someone that is refinancing a commercial property. And you think, well, what could the town have to do with this? Well, we had to make, do some investigation regarding any environmental issues that we knew about that the area might have. Some of these are all files we have to go through and pull some old files, but we're trying to keep the commerce going. So I appreciate everyone's hard work. I appreciate the council, you know, working hard on this too. This isn't an easy time, but I think that we are doing as well as we can. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayo. Anyone have any comments? I don't see any hands up. I think one piece on that, in speaking with Mr. Mayo earlier, again, this emergency fund is within his discretion. The Town Council has asked him to handle administering the funds. And I do think that the two opportunities that he sees, one with the food pantry, where they can make $5 worth of food out of every $1 donation, and Cards for the Community is a really good program for us to consider. Cards for the Community, we would be keeping donations from the community, within the community, benefiting the community. And that would be both residents and the restaurant establishments and supermarkets that those cards are given out for. And those cards would be given out by the food pantry, also by the school department in the same way that they approach issues of those most in need. With that, I know in talking with Mr. Mayo, the idea of perhaps donating $5,000 to the food pantry and another $5,000 to Cards of the Community seemed to be appropriate, given the amount of the emergency fund. And it seemed like the opportunity to be able to touch the greatest number of lives during this time in a very direct, immediate way. But if anyone had any thought or comment on that, certainly, I know that Mr. Mayo is open to the guidance of this body. Mr. Could you just turn? Go ahead, you're good.
Okay, now, thank you. I really would like to hear from the council on this because it is an interesting dilemma to go through. And I'd love to talk it through with any members that felt so offline. And I think I'm pretty accessible, so please contact me. Love to hear your comments. Thank you.
And I believe Counselor Butt has raised her hand. So Counselor Butt.
Hi, Steve, I just want to thank you. And I'm happy to discuss now, or I can call you later on and talk. I just want to be mindful, as when we created the program, that it was really to help individuals. Full supporter of the food pantry. I still volunteer there. I do a lot of fundraising, but I want to be mindful of when we created this fund because it was something that I had had at Rosie's Place very similar. And when we created it, it was to help individuals. And so I just want to be mindful of that. Again, if we can work around that. I also feel like the credit card, you know, the gift card program is a great program, but when we really created this emergency fund and modeled it after, you know, what Rosie's Place did and what Melrose did and some other places, it was really helping individuals in our community. So I just want to be, I want to talk that out a little bit. But like, again, would love to think about fundraising for the food pantry and for other businesses. Like I said, last, our last meeting, if we can find out ways to help our nonprofits and our small businesses, I'm all for that.
Thank you. Yeah, let's talk offline, thank you.
I guess one thing to keep in mind is the food pantry is directly impacting Wakefield residents as would be the card program. So those are direct impacts that we can follow through. Just, I think we should be mindful of that as well, certainly. Other comments on that? All right. Counselor Chines.
Sorry. I raised my hand.
Oh, apologies.
No, that's okay. I just, when I raise my hand and you don't know it, I don't know if it's something on my end.
I see lowered hand now, but let's go first, Vice Chair Santos, then Counselor Chines. Vice Chair Santos.
I totally understand what Maureen is saying. I think when we advertised the emergency fund specifically for issues with COVID-19 and what's happening now, I do think we're okay shifting a little bit of the intent. And I think those who donated understand what they're donating for. But I totally agree with her that I think it should go to individuals. However, I do feel like the food pantry helps our individual citizens. So I wouldn't, you know, want to give all of it to groups, but I think we've raised so much that so donating directly, which will have such a huge bang for our buck, doesn't move us away from our mission in these extraordinary times. But I absolutely see what Maureen's saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think just to add to the comments that Counselor Santos and Counselor Butt made, you know, $17,000 sounds like a lot. You know, my worry, though, is, you know, given the economic headwinds I think that we're facing, is that we could find out, really only in a matter of a couple of weeks, that that actually isn't very much. And so I would just, you know, supportive of doing something through the food bank, which obviously, there's a lot of need there. And I think a lot of people, you know, on the council have supported that, supportive of the Cards for the Community. But I would also want to make sure that at least over the next couple of weeks, we have enough flexibility in those funds, knowing that we're probably closer to the beginning, unfortunately, of where the need is than the end. And I wouldn't want to put us in a position where we're giving the money away or tying it up in a particular way of helping individuals that doesn't allow us to be flexible over the next several weeks.
Tell Counselor Mullen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you're going to take a vote tonight, I'd appreciate it that it be contingent on letting me do some research as to the constitutionality of making a donation from the town's coffers to a private organization, no matter how admirable its purpose. I'm thinking in particular about the anti-Aide Amendment in the Massachusetts state constitution. I'm looking at it now. It says, "No grant appropriation or use of public money, blah, blah, should be made by any political subdivision for the purpose of founding, maintaining, or aiding any infirmary, hospital, institution, primary or secondary school, or charitable or religious undertaking which is not publicly owned and under the exclusive control, order, and supervision of public officers." We may have a problem making a donation to anybody other than individuals out of the fund.
Is public money the same as these donations, which would be private in nature?
Well, that's part of what concerns me. That's why I don't say that it's a slam dunk that we can't do it.
Okay, well, I know that Mr. Mayo wanted to kind of put this out there tonight to get some feedback from folks. We talked about it earlier. We would not be voting on this because, again, when this was created, Mr. Mayo has the administrative authority on that. If anyone wants to have further communication with him, certainly, why don't we do that? But I at least wanted to put that out there. Are there any, Counselor Butt, give a comment?
Just one more comment. Steve, do you mind if we, I appreciate everyone's input on that. Do you mind next time we discuss it? The other population that I've been thinking about are the folks that you, Counselor Santos and Counselor Smith Galvin, met with Chief Scory and kind of the transient homelessness population and all that the police department does for them. And I'm just curious about those individuals too and what we've been doing in this time of COVID for them. I know there used to be a lot of gift card distribution from the police department to those individuals and, you know, the warm bags that people made over at Martha Luther King Day with the Human Rights Commission. So when we talk about this next time, just kind of knowing if there's needs with those individuals as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Butt. Any further comment? All right, seeing none then. Mr. Mayo, did you have anything further in terms of updates? I think we've covered it, correct?
No, I'm good. I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. All right, so then in that case, we'll move on to item number seven. Mr. Mayo and Mr. Mullen will both be on deck for this. This relates to temporary taxation changes and specifically how they would impact here in town if this body so desires. It would involve a serious It would involve a series of votes so that everyone is aware at home. Our entire packets continue to be online and available on our website. And Mr. Mayo had provided a detailed memorandum to us all, breaking down each of the components. The Mass Legislature has allowed some flexibility in our community to make some adjustments regarding various aspects of local taxation here. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mayo and then also Mr. Mullin for any comment or feedback.
Okay, I'll start on this. And again, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Tom, for working through this. And really, when this started, the Mass民众ip Association really worked, you know, with the cities and towns, whether it be mayors or town managers, administrators, to see what we can do to help the taxpayer. Because there are certain items that we cannot do by statute, and one of which is to waive penalties and interest on taxes. You know, a lot of you have received phone calls from people or emails over the years that people can't pay their taxes and it's tragic. But we as a community cannot waive interest or penalties on that. It just can't be done by statute. And some people get kind of upset and think we can, but that is, that is the law right now. So that in mind, we met with the MMA and I'm on the Policy Subcommittee for this region. And a couple of things we did look at was extending tax deadlines. So right now, the next tax bill is due May 1st in Wakefield. And one of the items we're going to ask you to vote on tonight is to extend that date that the tax bill is due to June 1st. This is accepting the legislation that the, that the, that the state passed, Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, that was signed by the governor, I believe it was a week ago Friday, or last Friday, when he signed that. So one of the things we'll be asking you to do is to extend the tax deadline to June 1st. Gives people a month to get things together. And the second item would be to waive interest and penalties through June 30th. So part number one is we would extend the tax date to June 1st and not waive any penalties and interest to June 30th, again, to help people. Was very important to the state legislature, and I appreciate this, that the money did come in this fiscal year. So that would be June 30th. And that would also, for waiving penalties, that would also be on water bills, water and sewer bills as well. The other item was to extend the date of abatements, applications, and other tax credit applications through June 1st as well for applying. So again, extend the date for the taxes to do, waiving interest and penalties, and extending the date that when abatements can be filed for. We're going to talk about town meeting separately, but maybe now Tom Mullin wants to jump in because he and I did go through this. So maybe he can jump in now and see if I made a mistake.
No, actually, I have very, I have very little to add. I think Stephen has summarized it well. I hope you have the memorandum I did to him. And there are draft votes that I recommend you take if you wish to implement the legislation that was recently passed.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mullin. So with that, are there any initial comments or questions by the council? Okay, seeing, yes, actually, Counselor Smith Galvin.
Thank you. Just one clarification. That does not include excise tax. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is Tom. That's my understanding. You're right.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. My second is maybe not completely directed to this, but given that you mentioned water bills, is there any way possibly for you to look into the discount that's given for early payment on water bills? To perhaps if people pay that, or they pay their regular amount, but if they pay early, some of that goes into either the emergency fund or some sort of redirection to people who are having a hard time paying their bills? And I would just say if we do look into that, it might be worth talking about to the light department about the same kind of arrangement. So perhaps this is not the time to talk about it, but I wanted to just put that out there.
Can I, can I answer that, Mr. Chairman? I think it's, I think it's a wonderful sentiment. One thing that I'm worried about is if bills don't get paid at all. There is an incentive for people to, to take advantage of the discount by paying early. So let me think about that and go over that with our DPW director because, you know, we have bills we've got to pay to the MWRA as a community too. So getting the money in early is important too. I understand. I like the sentiment a lot.
Somebody raised it to me, so I thought I would bring it up.
And I believe Counselor Chines has his hand raised. Counselor Chines.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Mr. Mayo. Have you gotten any information? Or do you know if the Gas and Light Commission has made any similar recommendations in terms of utility bills around waiving penalties or interest?
I do not. I don't have any information.
Thank you. That's fair.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Any further comments? So if it pleases this body, there are actually several different votes that can be taken. Again, the language, and thank you, Mr. Mullin, for preparing this detailed memo. The language in here is laid out, so I can read it aloud. Then I'll entertain a motion to that effect, if that pleases everyone. So the first relates to extending tax deadlines. And I will entertain a motion to the effect of, "I move that pursuant to Section 10A of Chapter 53 of the Acts 2020 and in light of the governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the date May 1st, as appearing in general laws, Chapter 59, Section 57C, Paragraph 7, 8, 10, and 11, be extended for the year 2022, June 1st, and the date April 1st, as appearing in general laws, Chapter 59, Section 57C, Paragraph 7, be extended to the year 2022, June 1st, the purpose being to extend the due date for property tax bills to June 1st, 2020." So with that, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Again, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Aye.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Donbrowski. So we're at 7-0. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. The next motion for your consideration is extending the deadline for abatement applications. The language would read, "I move that pursuant to Section 10A of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 and in light of the governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the date April 1st, as appearing in general laws, Chapter 59, Section 59, Paragraph 3, be extended for the year 2020 to June 1st, the purpose being to extend the due date for property tax exemption applications to June 1st, 2020." Having read that, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Roll call vote. Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski. Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you for that. And the third and final motion for your consideration is waiving interest in penalties. The language would read as such, "I move that pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 and in light of the governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the town waived the payment of interest and other penalties in the event of late payment of any..." Now, it says here, "excise, tax, betterment, assessment, or portionment of the law, water rate, or annual sewer use, or other charges added to a tax for any payments with a due date on or after March 10th, 2020, made after its respective due date, but before June 30th, 2020, the purpose being to avoid penalizing taxpayers for payments made late during the said emergency, but within fiscal year 2020." So with that, I'll entertain a motion as read.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Discussion.
So with the excise tax reference in there, is that consistent, Mr. Mullin, with the law, the state law that passed? Or is the excise tax a separate, that needs to be taken out, given Counselor Smith Galvin's question?
So I took the language in your most recent motion straight out of the statute as passed. So I think what it addresses is interest and penalties as opposed to the due date. And the previous two votes had to do with extending the due dates for payment and extending the deadline for abatement applications. I mean, why the legislature chose to carve it up that way is not my, not something I could comment on.
I think I can jump in on that. I think with excise taxes, the dates aren't set like, like real estate taxes are always going to be those four times a year. Abatement applications are always on a certain date. So excise taxes, there's different commitments as time goes. So I guess this would say any excise tax bills that are out now, or will put what out after March 10th, are, the penalties are waived to June 30th. Okay. That's a good thing for people. Yeah. Thank you.
And just to clarify, in the wording itself, it says, "excise, comma, tax, comma, betterment, assessment." So it doesn't say excise tax per se. I think it's almost used in a more generic way as I read it. But regardless, it's not specifically calling out excise tax on motor vehicles. Do we have further discussion? All right, seeing none, we have a motion that's been seconded relating to waiver of interest and penalties, as I have just read. I'll take a roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Aye.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Chairman Donbrowski. We have 7 to 0. That motion also carries unanimously. Thank you all for your indulgence in reading that through. Item number eight on the agenda is annual town meeting. As we discussed briefly last time, it appears quite obvious that we will need to reschedule our town meeting that is currently on the books for May 4th, 2020, to a later date in light of the COVID-19 pandemic in the state of emergency, both within the Commonwealth and within our town. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mullin. And I believe we also have our town moderator, Mr. Carroll, as well, to offer some comment relative to the proposed rescheduling of this town meeting. So with that, Mr. Mullin or Mr. Carroll.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's always been within the power of the Board of Selectmen or in Wakefield, the town council, to postpone the annual town meeting by vote. What this new legislation does is it makes clear that if the annual town meeting cannot be completed by the end of the fiscal year, that's okay. We will still be able to have a budget. We will still be able to legislate for the coming fiscal year, even if the meeting ends sometime, say, in July. Whether we can actually start it in July is not clear in the legislation. So conservatively, I would advise that we not attempt to do that. Instead, I think it makes sense to schedule it for sometime in June. And I think the recommendation from Steve is to make it June 8th. And if, as we approach that date, things are not looking good and we need to postpone further, once the, once the warrant has been posted, the moderator is empowered to make an extension of 30 days. And that 30-day extension can be repeated as often as necessary.
And Mr. Mullin, on that point too, I think it's important to point out that the warrant has not yet been approved by the town council, which puts us in a somewhat different position than had it been approved by town council. Is that correct?
That's right. The legislation draws a distinction between a warrant that has been issued and one that is not. Now, they don't define issuance. Most town councils take the position that that means posting of the warrant. I prefer the more conservative view that approval of the warrant in its form by the Board of Selectmen or here at the town council would constitute issuance because everything that's done after that is purely ministerial. But in any event, we don't have to face that quandary here in Wakefield because we don't have an issued warrant under any definition.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mullin. Mr. Moderator, have you anything to add?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and Town Council. Yeah, no, Tom summed up the recent legislation that's been passed. This, I'm on the GAVL line, which is the Mass Moderators Association chat line, if you will. And probably two weeks ago, my head was about to explode. Fortunately, I'm not on the legislative committee anymore that had to go through all this. But what I can tell you is there has been no stone left unturned or discussed in terms of having the meeting. I think it would be a waste of our time to speculate how we may conduct that, you know, today, when we've got at least a month and a half, if not two months, to where it should go. Two interesting points. One town west of Worcester, where they, you know, argue the purchasing the fire truck for three hours, they had to have theirs because of some grant they had. And they had it in a parking lot with the chairs all set apart on the lines. My other favorite is that the town of Menden intends on having theirs in the one of the few remaining outdoor drive-in theaters that they have. We won't have to get to that. But I've given some, you know, some consideration. I've talked to Tom and Steve over the last two weeks about how we go about this and when we can postpone it. And it's exactly as Tom said, as long as we issue the warrant sometime in June, then it flips over to my discretion to postpone it in conjunction with Ruth Clay. So, you know, we'll be in good shape. My only thought, and I'm not opening this up for discussion because we could be here all night, is maybe the gymnasium with chairs set apart, and believe it or not, there's a form, or there's a packet on exactly how far apart you have to be and how you work it. And it's pretty interesting, somebody came up with it. The guy in North Andover, who's really nuts and a good friend of mine. The other thing that's a concern, just so you know, is I talked to CAT, well, I took folks associated with CAT, and they have what's called a shot mic. So, you know, the kind of thing you'd see on the sidelines at a football game or something. So nobody would have, people wouldn't have to step up to the mic, as it were, and be breathing all over it. So that's, that's about as far as it goes. I think we'll be fine. And to get in any more details now would be, as I said, speculative and that sort of thing. So, questions?
Thank you for that, Mr. Moderator. And I think to your point, we're talking almost two months out. If you think about where we were two months ago versus where, you know, this is a situation that's changing by the day, certainly. So as it gets closer, I know that you'll be working with Steve, Ruth Clay, Tom Walsh, and the rest of the team. Questions for Mr. Moderator or Mr. Mullin? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion then to postpone the annual town meeting that is scheduled for May 4th, 2020, to the date of June 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, seeing none before you, the motion before you is to move the annual town, spring town meeting from May 4th to June 8th, 2020. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Aye.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Chairman Donbrowski.
Aye.
The motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, for taking part. Thank you, Mr. Mullin, for your work on this as well.
I have only one question. Chip, where did you go when I first started? Come on, you know, a little respect for your moderator, all right, Chipper? All right. Thank you, folks. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't know you couldn't add levity to a council meeting. All right, stop laughing, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Tommy, I'll be in touch. Thanks.
Thank you.
How do I get out of here as quick as I can?
Leave meeting. Bottom right.
Ask Nancy. She definitely can help you.
With that, item eight beyond the agenda is the approval of the aforementioned annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Mayo, I know that we've gone through the items on this warrant, but I think there were a few touch points that I'll turn it over to you to highlight for the council, if you would.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for moving the date and voting for the aides, the taxpayer. So anyways, the warrant is in front of you, and it's important to note that the town council has seen every budget and has seen almost every article at this point, albeit some of them may be... However, some of them may change, may be, maybe some recommended changes as we go through, you know, what's happening financially and what have you. Want to think we'll know more in the next couple of weeks. So we do have, we do have some time. But isn't, it is important to have items on the warrant that I'm calling them placeholders. And in the warrant in front of you or in your packet are all the items we've talked about. There are, there are three items in there, three articles for contracts for the police union, the fire, the police unions, the fire union and the, and the supervisors' union. Those are all in the, in the, in the warrant as well. We have not voted on those contracts. We have not presented those contracts to Finance Committee. However, in our forecasting, we have held the money aside for those contracts or what we anticipate they'll be. So I think in the next couple of meetings, we will have the opportunity to look at those. And if for some reason we can't come to an agreement, then we just indefinitely postpone them. But they have to be on the warrant for us to even discuss them at the town meeting. There is one item there, one article that is a little bit different and it's Article 15. And we've seen an article very similar to this before where sometimes I'll put an article in or Kevin Gill and I will put an article in that will handle, maybe we feel there's going to be a, because of overtime in the fire department, not to pick on them, but we think there's going to be an article there. And instead of going through the reserve fund transfer in case anything else shows up, we put a separate article to vote on that separately. Because of what's happening with the COVID-19 and Kevin and I were talking about this, we're, we're suggesting an article be in there again as a placeholder. I have no idea if it'll be necessary or if we'll need anything for all of the extra expenses that we're going to, that we are, we are seeing in multiple different departments, whether they be Board of Health, DPW, Emergency Management, Police, Fire, because of overtime, purchasing of items, renting of the hotel rooms, things like that. Bear in mind that most likely 75% of this will be reimbursed by the federal government. And we've also received some grants to cover other portions of it because of being part of a health district. So that is a placeholder. I'm not asking anything to be voted on tonight because I don't know if we'll need it or if we won't need it. So that's in there as well. I'm also including in here as article, there's a couple of citizens articles that we shall put on because they brought in the signatures. The zoning articles that already have been sent over, we put on and they are going to the planning board for their recommendations. And the final article, Article 28, is the Woods subdivision issue. If, if by some means we would, there was to be a settlement on that, although probably not because everything's shut down, including the D E P is not, is not working really much on this at this point. I would hate to have someone say to us, well, jeez, the town didn't show good faith by not having on the, on the warrant. We've had that, I think, on every town meeting warrant since this started, just to be safe. So I think these are all the articles that you've seen with those exceptions. And I'm open to any questions. This will then get posted. We'll be ready to go for the June 8th meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayo. Are there any questions? I see one from Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just actually a comment I wanted to make about an article that we did not put on the warrant. But counselors may remember earlier in the fall, Mr. Mayo and I had come to the council with some recommendations around license fee changes, both to sort of the process as well as some of the amounts of the fees. I, I think in a, in a normal world, we probably would have brought that back to the council for further discussion and placement on the warrant this spring. But in light of everything going on and the impact of the COVID crisis on the business community in Wakefield, we did decide not to move forward with that for further discussion in the Town Council and ultimately Town Meeting. But certainly hope that we get to a place where the economy recovers and we get past the COVID crisis at some point fairly soon where at a future town meeting, we can, we can talk through that again.
Thank you very much, Counselor Chines. Any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion then for the approval of the annual town meeting warrant as presented in the packets and as touched upon by Mr. Mayo.
So moved, Anne.
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Do I have any further discussion? So the vote before you was the approval of the annual town meeting warrants as, as laid out in the packet and as further detailed by Mr. Mayo. A roll call vote beginning with Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Chairman Dombrowski, yes, seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for that. And thank you, Mr. Mayo, for that explanation and your work on this, this word. As well as Ms. Dalton as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item number nine. This falls into Committees, Boards and Commissions. As we've been doing for the past year, we've invited various committees to come before this body to offer any comments or updates in terms of the work that they currently have going on, what they see going forward. And it's a good opportunity for us to be updated and also for us to have a good dialogue and an ongoing dialogue at that. So this evening, we're fortunate to have two different bodies joining us. The first is the Advisory Board of Public Works and I believe we have Christopher Tar, who is the Chairman of that Advisory Board. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
To have you here. So could you provide the, the council with a bit of an update in terms of what the Advisory Board of Public Works has been working on? And where you see things headed, you know, over the coming few months?
Sure. First, I want to thank all the counselors for having a a day to recognize all the volunteers in town. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it. I, I got a new job where I was out of town, so I couldn't attend that. But I, I really appreciate you all recognizing all the volunteers in town. I certainly can speak for the board and it was very appreciative from us. So I thank you for that. So far this year, we've worked on three road betterment hearings. This allows abutters to advocate either for or against a private street betterment. This year, we've had three. So two of them were approved by the town, Flanders Lane and Walton Lane. And Hart Street was withdrawn by the residents. Sorry about my printing. We also had a representative from our board participate for the Complete Streets Working Group. We took part in all the group sessions that were either at the Galvin and any of the public hearings to implement, implement that plan. And Wakefield was awarded, correct me if I'm wrong, was it 378,000 for that effort this year? So we're very happy to step forward and help put that through. We also can conduct abatement request hearings. We held hearings related to citizen abatement requests as needed. Trying to think some of the other things that we've, we, we've conducted tree hearings as well. We held one hearing was to evaluate the need to remove a public shade trees to accommodate the National Grid line project in. And we negotiated tree donation to recoup the canopy cover for the adjacent area. So that was, you know, not good to be getting rid of trees, but negotiated and made sure we recouped and planted some trees back. So I thought that was a very positive thing. We also, this year, which is going to be a spring 2020 start, the, the board, after researching and interviewing with some representatives, we, we're going to implement a curbside textile recycling program starting in the spring of 2020. Let me just get the name. It's simple recycling. They had representatives come to our meeting and, you know, go through all the different facts about it. It's going to be very user friendly. I believe they're going to supply us with bags in a mailer type where they go directly to your house for free. And you can put these items in your, in these bags, put them curbside and they'll take them away from you for, for free. I know that some people have approached me before that some of the textile bins around the town sometimes get filled with stuff we don't like to see, especially in the school parking lots and stuff. So I think this is another way that maybe some elderly people that can't maybe get out to the schools to put some of those textiles there, they can do this curbside from their home. So with the, with the virus going forward, that might be the best way to go as well. And trying to think, and I think that's just about it. Oh, on deck, obviously. Coming up, we'll have the annual water and sewer rate evaluation and recommendation, recommendation to the council. The stormwater land disturbance hearing as dictated by the town bylaw, Chapter 170, late spring. So we have those two topics coming up depending upon obviously timing with the viruses. That's, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tar, for that. I'll open up to the body. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Tar about the Advisory Board of Public Works? Counsel, Vice Chair Santos?
Um, just really briefly, I know that we in the years past have talked about perhaps, you know, what the role of this board was, Chris. And I think with you and several of the members on it in recent years, it's, it's taken on such a nice, responsible, cooperative role with the DPW and other town boards. So I really want to praise you for that because I'm not sure historically, you know, it's, it's always been as consistent as it seems to, to be the last few years. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And I appreciate everyone's support on improving the roads around Wakefield. I know that's everyone's complaint. In the past couple of years, we've, as a board, we felt that, you know, the DPW needs, you know, a little more money to help better the roadway improvement to help us. And I, I obviously support, appreciate your support.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Tar, for the update. Really appreciate that. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit and actually I'll probably ask the same question of the Environmental Sustainability Committee next. But as we look at sort of reducing the waste stream in Wakefield, obviously the textile recycling is part of getting materials out of the trash street don't need to be there. Are there any other programs or initiatives that you would see coming down the pipe that you'd like to discuss in the Advisory Board, composting, other areas that we could look at to try to reduce our, our, our waste footprint in Wakefield?
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly open to any discussions that anyone might want to have. I know with Mr. Conway, you know, taking over somewhat new, I know he's kind of trying to get his wheels going with certain initiatives and different implementations. So I certainly see there being more discussion in the near future. And we are completely open to that as well.
Thank you for that. Counselor Butt?
Hey, Chris, thanks for that update. I'm really excited to hear about the textile curbside recycling. I'm just wondering, have, have you guys talked about programs for people that aren't part of like a live-in condos or apartment buildings and how they can participate as well?
Um, not specifically, but that certainly raises a great point and we can certainly address that at the next meeting.
Awesome. I think we've talked about for a recite, like small condos that don't recycle or, you know, that use other vendors. So if you guys could just look into that, that would be great.
If there's a way we can get them incorporated, absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Butt. Anyone else? I will say that the coordination for, by DPW, just generally, when we're looking at things like stormwater, environmental preparedness issues, all the sorts of, you know, all those issues are really, they're, they're, they converge together in, in a really meaningful way when we're talking about trying to clean the lake. When we're trying to talk about being more environmentally conscious and sensitive. And I think that DPW has really been able to bring those disciplines together in a way that's been really, really beneficial to the town. And there's some real synergy going on there, which I'm, I'm appreciative of, certainly. So thank you for the work that you and the entire board have been doing on that front. And I think we've got, you know, great leadership with DPW and you and your board are certainly a great support to, to the work that they're doing. So thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Butt, your hand is up still for a new question?
I don't know. That was
Lower hand. Got it. All right. Anyone else?
One last thing, Chairman.
Yes.
I also want to congratulate one of our fellow board members, Elena Proakis Ellis. I always say her name wrong, so I'll apologize to her now. But she was recently named the DPW Director for Melrose. So we're certainly proud of her from the board and we offer her support, obviously. If there's anything we could do for her, we support her. So I just wanted to add that. I know she couldn't join us tonight.
That's great. Well, congratulations to her. And, and again, thank you so much for taking the time to give us that update and we look forward to great things ahead with DPW.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our, our next item is item nine B, Environmental Sustainability Committee. This is a newer committee that the Town Council has created and I know that they've been doing some really great work for us already, hitting the ground running. And this evening, I'm, I'm happy to welcome Rob Darnell, who will be giving us some updates relative to the work that the Environmental Sustainability Committee has been, has been doing. So good evening and welcome.
Hi. Hi, thanks for having me. Yeah, I do have a couple of quick slides to to, I don't know. Oh, okay. Right, so the the Environmental Sustainability Committee was formed in May 2019. Our members consist of four town residents, the DPW Director, Environmental Manager, a member from the Gas and Light Commission, Town Councilor, School Commission, and four student liaisons. Next slide, please. We did a lot of public outreach at the beginning and came up with some guiding principles that sort of represent what, what committee's looking at. Communication across town departments. We work with businesses, different committees on different projects. Next slide. Some of the public outreach we've done, we've done outreach at events. We did a Wakefield resilience survey. The farmer's market, we did a community drop-in. Next slide. Some of the actions we've undertaken so far, clean energy, we created a, a map of all the municipal roofs in town and mapped them for solar for, for now and for in the future. And one of those projects is going ahead, the pumping station. And one, as a member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, I'm also on the Clean Lake Committee. Next slide. What some of the things we've been doing is working closely with the schools to reduce their waste, which they, in the kitchens, they have very few, very little waste there. They do an excellent job. This food services, but any food that isn't, we, we try and rescue it and up in the corner, there you can see what you could collect at lunch. And then recycling, we implemented a composting program through the four elementary schools, which was going well, obviously, until the schools were shut down. We had an estimated nine tons of compost we were expecting to collect. Next slide. And looking ahead, we're working to continue the zero waste program at the schools and working with food services. And we also sorry, lost my track. We've also been helping with other programs at the library. They're going to be implementing a, you can rent a electrical meter or something like that instead of having to buy one. So there's a reuse program there. And working with the American to make it a zero waste building with the Girls and Boys Club, the food pantry and the And, um, working with the American to make it zero waste building with the girls and boys club, the food pantry and the, the hall itself. Uh, next slide. And as Earth Day is next week, April 22nd, we're doing a virtual community celebration of the day. Uh, what, we're actually gonna send this out tonight. So, um, we can send it to all the PTOs and different groups in town, asking for pictures, artwork, poems, a rock, any writing of anything that they see represents Earth Day from clean, the cleaning of the lake to recycling, the trash reduction. Uh, next slide. And that's, as we have a website with some more information on, and people can reach us at escwakefield dot ma to us. And any questions?
That's great. Thank you so much, Mr. Donnell, and thank you for all the work of the ESC. I know you've, you've done a lot in, I think, about a year since, since you were created. So thank you for that. Before I take questions, I'll turn it over to, uh, Counselor Smith Galvin. Counselor Smith Galvin, as, as our town council representative or liaison, do you have anything that you'd like to add about the work that's, that's been done so far this year?
Um, not specifically, Rob touched on everything. I'm extremely proud of this committee, um, of how the representatives from school committee and the DPW and the different commissions around town have worked with the community members. Um, we made a conscious decision to have the, the four community members take the, the chair positions, the leadership positions and really be the guiding force on it. Um, and I think a lot of the things that Rob highlight speak for themselves. Um, and we have a lot more to do, um, in the coming years. So, a, and it's really, um, appropriate to be here with the, DPW advisory board, because I think that there's a lot of synergies between those two committees as well that we really probably have yet to explore. So that's all I would add at this point.
Well, thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin. I know you were instrumental in creating this, this, this committee. So thank you for your work on that indeed. Um, Counselor Chines?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a quick comment and, and question. Uh, first, just from the common standpoint, I, I really want to congratulate, uh, the ESC, particularly for the work that the committee is doing, uh, with the schools, you know, seeing this firsthand with my own kids, the, both the, the level of improvement in terms of reducing waste, uh, you know, in the schools I, I know has been notable. But I'll also say the educational opportunity that's presented and the level of awareness that the kids have gotten out of it. I mean, I, I've seen it from my own kids and so, uh, really appreciate the work that went into that. I think that's been a great program and a, and a huge success, uh, for the committee. Question I did want to ask is, uh, same question I asked to Mr. Tar. As we think about sort of reducing waste, um, you know, is there sort of a, a waste reduction agenda that, um, Mr. Darnell, you or other members of the committee have in mind or other thoughts that you have around, uh, you know, reducing, uh, you know, reducing waste from, from households and businesses in town?
Um, so we have started to implement one thing for events. We tried at the farmer's bucket to make that a zero waste event. And we'd like to roll that out in the future. Um, we're working on the Marical being a zero waste building. So that's a reduction for the town. And for residents, we have been talking with the DPW a lot about composting and the effort going on there. We're currently about a hundred fifty-seven people signed up and there's, there's about thirty others signed up with a company in town to compost. And we're looking at ways of promoting that. Compost, composting around town. And obviously with the cost of trash nearly, well, uh, going up twenty-five percent, we're, we're going to be working close with the DPW to try and increase our recycling, but reduce the contamination of the recycling.
Uh, Counselor Dinaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Donnell, thank you very much for your presentation. I have one question. Uh, years ago, there used to be several containers set up throughout the town to accept recyclable trash. Instead of just having, uh, regular trash receptacles scattered throughout the town, there were actually places for you to throw bottles and cans. Is there any way of re-instituting that into the town's capability of taking more recyclable, uh, trash off the, uh, streets and into the right department, let's say? Instead of having it brought, right now, the only way to get rid of plastic in, in glass is to throw it into the regular trash barrels. Is there any way of us bringing in barrels for the recyclables?
So, um, I know the DPW did get a grant for some recycle bins and I think they actually, they actually have them, but they've been reluctant to put them out right now just for concerns with the virus and need some education first on cross, uh, contamination, because it needs to be the right stuff going in there. Sort of labeling and things like that, we're still working on.
So we do have some that can be put out, but they're not going to be put out right away.
Right, right.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Around the parks, the farmer's market, and the areas like that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dinaco. Any other further questions? I will say that recycling is something that, that is, is off on the horizon. I know, um, town administrator Mayo has mentioned a number of times, uh, as has, uh, Director Conway, the costs that we're looking at going forward. So we have to be very, very mindful of that. Um, and I know at our next meeting, um, I've been speaking with Counselor Smith Galvin and we'll have an opportunity to, um, you know, provide some better insight and education into making sure we're all recycling in a clean way, doing clean recycling, because that has a, a significant impact, um, on, on everybody certainly, and certainly on our costs as well. Um, so with that, if there are no further questions, I'll thank you again, Mr. Donnell, so much for taking the time this evening and for all the work you've done, both on the ESC and also the Clean Lake Committee. Um, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Tar, as well. Thank you both for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks.
Moving on in the agenda, item number ten, uh, for this evening is the, relates to upcoming town events. And in fact, Mr. Mayo touched on, on this at our last meeting a little bit with respect to the Fourth of July parade. Um, and this was added as an agenda item to give us an opportunity to have a perhaps a bit more robust discussion and, and hopefully come to some consensus relative to, how we handle events that are anticipated in, in the coming several weeks. Um, and speaking with Mr. Mayo, I know he's done some good outreach in, it, talking with, uh, the WCNA, for example, talking with the, uh, independent state committee, uh, talking with, uh, the West Side at, as he has reported. And we certainly have some other activities, um, that may or may not happen, pursuant to the schedule. But in light of COVID-19, it seems that, uh, pretty apparent that we're going to need to have some sort of policy in place for the foreseeable future. In speaking further with Mr. Mayo, the, the idea of perhaps just having a moratorium on any single day town events through July fourth might be the most prudent of steps. Um, certainly that can be revised as circumstances warrant. I understand that there's still some time out from now, but a lot of these events need time to be able to prepare and plan. And so the idea of knowing definitively that we're going to have, say, for example, a moratorium to a date certain provides the town with, with, you know, an, an assurance from a safety perspective, but also is fair to, um, the various organizations that may be, you know, still potentially contemplating an event, um, in our community. So with that, Mr. Mayo, if you had anything to add, otherwise I'll open up to any comments or questions.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, particularly thought about this in regard to the Fourth of July, event for the day. I mean, it is a wonderful day for the town. I mean, I grew up here, um, remember that day fondly as a, as a kid and, and as an adult and taking my children and my grandchildren. Um, it's a multi-generational day. Um, but as I mentioned last week in talking with, um, uh, members of the West Side Social Club and then talking with, um, Wakefield Independent State Committee and my own town departments, there's a lot of planning that goes into that day. We have fifty thousand people in town that day for the Fourth of July and, um, people might say, well, just have a smaller parade. We plan the same. We have a big parade, big parade, small parade. We still have to block off the streets. I still have to have all my, uh, police officers on, um, on deck. I've got a, a DPW people fire. I may put a fire truck on the other side of town, um, because we can't get it there. So, and the other thing is, is that these, so there's a lot of planning. The other thing is, is that these events take a lot of money to put on. And fundraising is something, and in talking with specifically the West Side Social Club that puts on the, um, the children's events and the fireworks, that's a forty thousand dollar job to put all those things on. Given today where people are, given that people don't have food, uh, we just talked about extending people's tax, uh, potato taxes. They feel very uncomfortable or, um, Carol Hubbard, wonderful woman, feels very uncomfortable even asking people for donations for this because of what's going on. So kind of started talking there. Um, so I would suggest that as, as it pains me, but we have, we did mention it, that we do cancel the Fourth of July event. And I would appreciate a vote of the, uh, the board for that in conjunction with the rest. What we also have is we have many, many events that go on in the common. Some of them are, uh, walks that bring in thousands of people. Um, I don't know how we could ever socially distance that. We, we've seen that happen, a problem in our own community. Um, am I hopeful that the, um, the state will start opening up and things will start opening up when we get into the beginning of May and mid-May? Yes, I am. I'm hopeful. I'm praying like we all are. Uh, but it's not going to go from, it's not going to be like a light switch. Uh, Dr. Fauci said this the other day, as did Governor Baker. We're not going to turn on a light and say, okay, guys, back to, back to normal and we can have a thousand people walking around the lake. Um, it's going to be a slow process of opening up different, different items. Um, to be fair to all of these events from the Cub Scouts to the festival by the lake, and I've been in contact with them too, um, uh, that we and, uh, Sherry's been in contact with the walks as well to let them know what's going on. Then we canceled all one-time events and I would include the Fourth of July in that through July fourth. Um, I think that one item that will come back to the council, um, which is not yet scheduled because they don't have a, um, permit yet, is the, um, farmer's market. Now, farmers markets like grocery stores are a little bit under a little bit different category. There are protocols for some farmer's markets that are in, um, that are, that are still working now, that are still going now. I think we need to look at that and make a decision there, but that's not a one-time event. So that's kind of outside of this. Festival by the lake, I said, I've, um, spoken to them. They are, we've traded emails. They haven't made a decision yet, to be fair, but I think that, um, just like with the Sweetville lecture series, maybe we have to make that decision for them, take them off the hook. And I'm not saying this can ever happen again. Let's move them to the fall when this is all over and people can really go in and, and enjoy it. So I would request that the, uh, council, uh, support, um, my recommendation, which is also the recommendation of police fire, um, emergency management, uh, that these events be postponed or, yeah, from July through July fourth, um, we can give people plenty of time to either return donations or find new dates. Um, and I think the farmer's market is not included in that because that's not a one-day event. They come back and we take them separately. So that's what I'd be looking for and open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. And, and the first question in is from Counselor Chines?
Uh, thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Uh, just a, a couple of, of quick things. Um, I, I agree, uh, sort of reluctantly with your recommendation. I, I think, you know, we all feel sort of the.
It was reluctantly made.
Yeah, you know, I, I think we all feel the pain of, of having to cancel these events that we all love so much. Um, but, you know, certainly I think it's the right thing to do. Um, I also, uh, agree with the idea of having sort of a consistency, consistent policy around it. So we're not saying we're canceling the parade and we'll do these other things kind of on an ad hoc basis. We're saying consistently, you know, until this date's certain, we will not permit any one-time events. And I think there's value in having that, that direction out there. Um, we mentioned last week and I want to put it out there again, um, I would like to see us as a community do something in an appropriately socially distanced way to recognize the Fourth of July. Uh, I've had a couple of suggestions that people have sent to me. Um, obviously postponing is one of them. Uh, Mr. Mayo, you had suggested maybe doing a street fair or a sidewalk day for some of the businesses. Uh, we've talked about a house decorating contest. Um, you know, I'd love to be able to think through and, uh, would invite the community to let us know if they have any thoughts on differently, which we could, you know, recognize the day, recognize how special it is, I think in particular for our community here. Um, but do so in a way that's kind of appropriate to the times and maintain some of the spirit that hopefully will, uh, get us to a place where we could have a, a really record-setting parade, uh, next year.
Absolutely, indeed. I think that's, I think it's a sentiment shared by everyone. This is not a vote that anyone is looking to take. I think it's, it's a vote that, um, it's, it seems it's, it's necessary to take. Unfortunately, given the circumstances that are, are beyond all of our control relative to that. Um, Mr. Dinaco, your hand is up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, directing to, uh, Mr. Mayo, um, I do agree with your, um, suggestion and your recommendation in regards to, uh, no single day events between now and July fourth. Um, would you consider moving it to July sixth, the cap to the Sunday? Because of the walks that we have going around the lake and I'm, and I'm assuming you're including the walks as well. Any, any organization that wants to use the lake for walks? Would that be out of your?
Yes, yes. All, all of those are included.
So would you, would you consider extending it to the sixth instead of the fourth?
Sure.
Being a Saturday?
That's fine. That, that's fine with me.
And then this way here, we captured the entire weekend?
Yep, that would be fine with me.
Thank you.
Counselor, uh, Vice Chair Santos?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I absolutely support, uh, the motion and I think what has guided me is not wanting to put more of a burden on our first responders than they're already, um, living with right now. Um, and I know we're not talking about it, but in thinking, circling back to the farmer's market, when we do talk about that in the future, Steve, I wouldn't be against talking about different locations. It might be easier to spread out, to maintain the market. I think, you know, we, we've seen other towns doing that, but I just want to throw that out there. I know why we haven't been in years past, why other locations have been shot down. Um, I was always against the shooting of that, those locations down as quickly as they were, but I just think that, you know, in, in the coming weeks, let's keep an open mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. Counselor Smith Galvin?
Um, I also support it completely. I, remind me, Steve, when we are able to have events again, is priority given to Wakefield organizations to use the lake? I feel like we're probably going to have a fairly short season and maybe some competitiveness.
Yeah, we, we, um, have over the past kind of reused, uh, or, or people that have been with us for a while get to come back again. Um, they need to have a Wakefield connection. Uh, it may be a very large event, but they have Wakefield connection. But I certainly think that, um, if the Gator Gallup wants to come, that to me would take precedence over, uh, and this is my own opinion, over, over and out. And I mean outside group, but something that's not as central. So yes, I think that that's what we'd like to see. I mean, it's horrible to cancel the kids' fields day, you know, field days for the eighth graders. I mean, that, that's sad, but I think it's necessary.
That, that's what I would just ask is I, I think there's going to be some competition and we should just try to support our Wakefield organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin. Do we have any other questions or comments? You know, I mean, I think at a time where we're trying so hard to promote social, social distancing and, and doing our best to try to keep people, as a part of the, the plan to mitigate, the last thing we want to do is, is sacrifice all those efforts just as we're starting to like turn the corner. So, um, I, I think that this again is, is, is for the health and safety of our community and anyone who's visiting. So with that, I will entertain a motion um, for a moratorium on any single day town events that would be scheduled through Ju, Monday, July sixth, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Chines. Do we have any further discussion? All right, so the motion before you is, is moratorium on any single day town events through July sixth, 2020, a roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinaco?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes. Vote is seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Um, thank, thank you all for, for input on that. Again, this is not a decision that I know any of us are making easily and it's not something we, in the, we'd want to have happen if, unless it was necessary. So thank you for that. Item number eleven on the agenda is the setting of a public hearing. We have, um, a request to send a public hearing on April twenty-seventh, 2020. This, our. We have a request to set a public hearing on April 27th, 2020, this, our next meeting at 7:05, by Bavia 2 LLC, and it's an application for a license under a modification of an existing license to store flammable that 950 Main Street. So this is simply setting the public hearing for the next meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So move, so move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Counselor Dinoco. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chimes. Do we have any discussion? The motion before you then is the setting of the public hearing as described for April 27th, 2020 at 7:05 PM. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chimes?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes. The vote is seven to zero. The meeting, public hearing is set. Thank you all for that. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item number 12. This is the part of the meeting where we're going to be making appointments for committees, commissions, and boards for anyone watching at home. There are a number of committees, commissions, and boards within, within town that serve some great functions. We've seen some of them this evening, including the Advisory Board of Public Works and the Environmental Sustainability Committee. All of these appointments will be for a three-year term with a few exceptions that we'll get to in a moment. I should point out that we had posted for anyone interested to submit a very basic application and resume, and I thank Vice Chair Santos for all of her work in following up with the committees, boards, and commissions to make sure everyone knew when their, their term was up. That's really important. And I think we have in our packets probably the best compilation of applications or resumes that I've seen in my time on the council, certainly. And a number of these have, have more applicants than seats available, which is, which is also great. And so we thank everyone who has applied, anyone who doesn't end up getting chosen, please continue to, to apply because we have a lot of volunteers doing a lot of great work and we're always looking for new people. Sometimes circumstances just are such that we might keep someone in place, but that's not to say that, that you two would not be a value-add somewhere else within town. So with that, I'll go through, I'll just take each of the, the commissions, boards, or committees, one by one. Again, all the materials have, have been included in the packet. I know all the counselors have already reviewed them all. I'll start with the Advisory Board of Public Works, where we have one opening. And if anyone is looking to nominate someone for a discussion, why don't we just take it like that? And then if there's a second, we can go from there. So first is Advisory Board of Public Works. We have one opening for that, and we actually have two applicants, one of them Maria Palamino, who is currently serving on that board, and the other is Gray Lane.
Ed?
Yeah.
I, I'm on my phone, so I'm having a real hard time finding all the, raising my hand and all of that, so I apologize. But I would make him, I would move to appoint Maria Palamino to the opening. She's someone we, we appointed fairly recently, has not been on for a long time, but I think has been doing a great job, and so I would put her name out.
And if you literally want to wave to me, I'll be sure to wave.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dinoco?
Second, I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for Maria Palamino to continue in her role on the Advisory Board of Public Works for a three-year term. Do we have any discussion by the body? All right, so the motion before you is, is the reappointment of Maria Palamino to the Advisory Board of Public Works. Again, unfortunately, we'll need to go roll call vote. We'll try to do this quickly, however. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chimes?
Aye.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes. Seven to zero. Congratulations to Ms. Palamino, and we encourage Mr. Lane to certainly, you know, continue to be active and applying. The next two positions before us are on the Board of Appeals. Now, we have four applicants, two that are currently sitting on the ZBA and two that are seeking to be a part of it. The first is Amy Wall, currently on the ZBA. The second is Mr. David Hatfield, currently on the ZBA. The third is Mr. Dando Benjamin, and the fourth is Michael Owen. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the appointment of one or two members, as we have two openings.
Hi, I'm waving again.
Vice Chair Santos?
And I'm not nominating every single commission, by the way. I'll jump on these two. So I received a lot of emails from current members of the board, as well as citizens, with regard to Amy Wall and David Hatfield. And I can certainly say, from my experience, I would be putting both of their names forth to be reelected, or be reappointed. We appointed two to three fairly new folks to the Board of Appeals in the last three years, so I think we're doing what we intended to do over my tenure on Town Council, which is to put some new blood into some of these boards, and it's not just an automatic stamping. I think Amy and David have shown tremendous leadership with regard to some of the projects going forth, and I know we have a lot of big projects happening, and I like to see that sort of consistency and depth of knowledge, especially where we're going into uncharted territories in a bit of a new world. So we have some new faces on that board. I would advocate reappointing both Amy Wall and David Hatfield. Thank you.
So we have a motion for the reappointment of Amy Wall and David Hatfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Dinoco. I'll open up to discussion. Again, this is the opportunity to speak about other, other of the nominees or anyone else for that now. Okay, I will say that I was very appreciative of the presentation that the ZBA made to us, to our council. I thought it was very thorough. I thought it was very thoughtful, and it really encouraged me that we have some really talented people in place. I know that they have a very daunting job, including trying to have, if we think our Zoom meetings are challenging, their meetings are pretty incredible, and they had a public hearing last week. It went off flawlessly. They're doing good work, and it does a lot of important work ahead for them. And I do think we have a good mix to Vice Chair Santos's point of seasoned members, but also newer members as well, which is important, I think, and I think it's one of our principles with any of these appointments. Any other comments, thoughts? All right, so the motion before you then is the reappointment of Amy Wall and David Hatfield to the zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term. Again, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Chimes?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
And I too vote yes, so vote is seven to zero. Congratulations to Amy Wall and to David Hatfield for your reappointment for three years. And I know they're both on this, this call participating, so, so thank you. And onward, congratulations and good luck. We appreciate what you're doing. Okay, moving on to the next set of appointments. This is for capital planning. The Capital Planning Committee has two openings. Again, these are for three-year terms. We have three applicants, Jeffrey Gunta, Tracy Clevercy, who is currently on the committee, and Daniel Colore, who is also currently on the committee. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of one or two to the Capital Planning Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Clevercy back onto the committee as well as Daniel Colore.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Counselor May, for the reappointment of Tracy Clevercy and Daniel Colore to the Capital Planning Committee. Do we have any discussion? All right, so the motion before you was the reappointment of Tracy Clevercy and Daniel Colore to the Capital Planning Committee. Do we have any discussion? All right, so the motion before you was the reappointment of Tracy Clevercy and Daniel Colore to the Capital Planning Committee for another. Counselor Chimes, go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just a question, I did see in the packet, we did have a, a letter from the chair of the Capital Planning Committee, asking if the council would consider expanding the Capital Planning Committee to add Mr. Gunta as a, as an additional member. This may be a question for, actually, this is a question for Mr. Mullen, but from what I understand, the size of the Capital Planning Committee is not set in charter or bylaws, and so is it something that we are able to consider in this meeting or in a separate discussion?
I, I'm paging now through the charter and bylaws. I don't think, I think you're right. I don't think that this committee is established by either, and if it's established only by the vote of the Town Council, then you're free to change the number as you wish.
So to that end, I would maybe ask Mr. Dinoco, I believe you made the nomination motion?
We're in discussion, correct, Mr. Chair?
That's correct, yes. We are in discussion.
I would consider it, but I, my, my concern right now is that we're making a change to something that's been established at the time that we're making a vote. So it's not against anything or the person, but it's the procedure that we've been following. So I respect what you're, what you're asking of us through the Capital Planning Committee members to take all three, but it's typically something that we don't normally do until the discussion. Now you're asking us to take the third person in without a lot of thought as to how it's going to make up the body of the board, how many members will now be on the board, will it be an even amount of people, could there be a deadlock? I mean, there's just a number of different things that I can come up with, but if there's no concern from the rest of the council right now, I don't have a problem with it. I'd like to hear if there's any comments from the rest of the council at this point, before I change my motion.
Just, sorry, if I could, if I could just sort of maybe expand and then, you know, open it up to comment, you know, certainly appreciate that perspective, and I think if it were a situation where the availability of two seats versus three seats would have limited the number of applicants or the type of applicants we would have received, I would would certainly agree, agree with Mr. Dinoco that it's something that I would be, you know, reluctant to change sort of in the middle of the process. You know, that being said, I think, you know, we did hear the, the chair of the committee advocate, you know, I think in a convincing way that there's value in having this additional member on the board. You know, his letter didn't suggest any concerns about sort of an even number or a deadlock or anything like that. And so I think in a community where, you know, so much of what we do in government is dependent on volunteers, if there is both a need and a willingness from a qualified volunteer to participate in a role like this, I think it's something that we should consider. I think if we decide not to, you know, that's, that's perfectly reasonable and hope that it's something that maybe we can bring back for a future discussion when there is an appointment on the line. But again, certainly just given the feedback that we heard from the committee and from the committee's chair, I think it's something that would be in bounds to discuss today.
Thank you for that, Counselor Chimes. Do we have further, Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Well, Counselor Chimes brought up the same issue I was going to, but further to that, I definitely agree with him, but if there is discomfort with a full position, I certainly see no reason why we couldn't appoint a person as an alternate or some other role. So that's another possibility.
Mr. Chairman, without any further comments, I mean-
Counselor Dinoco?
My hand's still the only one up right now, and I'm going to lower my hand just in case someone else wants to talk, but if there's no one else going to be in opposition to it, I will amend my motion. So I just wanted to hear others before I did that. So if everybody's okay with it, I have no problem.
Sorry, waving.
I'll, I'll, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't know if my sound was off or Paul's. The, I don't have a problem with adding a third. I'm, I'm sorry, Jonathan, I can't find, I remember reviewing the letter, but I can't pull it up right now in front of me. Did the chair indicate specific reasons why he thought adding a third person to this, to this vote was good? And I, and I don't doubt it at all, I'm just curious. Or anyone, frankly.
I was going to say, I'd have to pull up the, the letter. I, not on that page in the packet.
I'm on it right now. It says, "The current members," so he spoke with the whole committee, "request the Town Council to add an additional committee spot for the new applicant."
I mean, yeah. Yeah, I think it, it says something if the entire committee, who's a hard-working committee, who's crunching numbers, who's meeting a lot, suggests that having a third, this third person added, and the resume is outstanding. I see no problem with us appointing all three.
He goes on to say, "We welcome a new voice and perspective." So I think we defer to chairs on things like this, if it's, you know, within our ability to do it.
Thank you.
I think one of the concerns I'm going to be mindful of is, this is currently an odd-numbered committee of, I believe it's five members at present, and I, I don't know what sort of precedent we're setting in a given year when a given, you know, committee, commissioner, or board is looking to expand because they like a particular candidate. And I think we have a concern potentially going forward of, then now we have the six-member board or committee, is that what we're looking to do? And then what if next year they decide they, they want another voice on that? And then a council says, okay, then let's make it seven, you know? And so where, where does the creep end? I do think that we, you know, it's within our domain to, you know, with these ad hoc committees to determine how, how large they are, but there is a certain precedent-setting nature to it that's not unique. I think a different way of looking at it would be associate members, and that's going to be coming up later on with the Permanent Building Committee as an example of that. A little bit different standing in that perhaps it's a non-voting member, but they could still lend their voice to it. It preserves the voting block of the same number of people, but allows for the, the additional perspective that's being talked about here and apparently sought by this particular committee. So I think that might be what, some way we can think about that. It gives us a little bit more flexibility going forward, and it doesn't set a precedent of, you know, again, expanding, expanding, expanding with each, with each year and creating some problems like, I know like Counselor Dinoco said, there are, there will be times where votes, you know, it will matter to have an odd number of people voting on things, especially capital planning. There's a lot of stuff that comes before capital planning, so there's going to be a lot of different opinions. So I'm not, not opposed to the idea of having, you know, more perspectives, but I do think the way in which we manage those, those votes is still an important function that we should do as a body. Counselor Chimes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly, you know, in terms of the suggestion of considering an associate member type role or a non-voting member, you know, that would be something that I would be amenable to as we think about this. You know, to me, I think the most important piece is assuring that we set up our committees to be able to succeed in the work that they do, and I do think the members of the committee and the committee chairs have the best perspective on that, certainly more so than, you know, than we may in the council. You know, but I think the other important precedent that we want to try to send is to the extent that there are people in our community who have, you know, skills and talents and capabilities that they want to give, I think we want to encourage rather than discourage that participation. And so, you know, to the extent that looking at adding, you know, a number of associate members to committees that may not necessarily have a vote when it comes to something that's contested, but, you know, could be a way for new individuals to get involved, I think that's something that I'd be very comfortable with.
We have a similar model with busy VA currently, and I think that works well. It allows oftentimes for newer members to come on board, to- It allows oftentimes for newer Members to come on board to almost observe and understand how the Committee works, and then they ultimately, you know, become a voting member. I think it's not a bad arrangement in place, and I don't think it disturbs the fundamentals of, you know, the structure that we've tried to create here and maintain. Vice Chair Santos?
Yeah, I would agree with what Jonathan just said with regard to entertaining an Associate Member, but to suggest also the Capital Planning, I've, you know, been on the Board for seven-ish years, and they've never come forth, they don't ask this for every year for us to add members. So if they see a need, I certainly would encourage them to come back to us suggesting why maybe they do want to increase the Board membership. But I'm fine with doing an Associate Member for now and giving them the flexibility to circle back with us to be a little more specific if they want to add some members. Thank you.
I don't think we're in a position where we necessarily, we've all inherited these numbers, so I'm not pretending that the Committee is right-sized, but I do think that we should understand, and I'm not saying it is, but is it because not enough Members are showing up to Capital Planning for example? And that's why they're more, that's a different discussion than they feel there's just so much, you know, work to tackle, it's too much for the limited that we have. So just having some more clarity from them, and not just Capital Planning, but any, you know, Board or Committee that we have the authority to make larger or smaller as the case may be. I think that, I think Vice Chair Santos is spot on with that, and that's something that I would encourage anyone to do, you know, reaching out to us. Because, again, just because we've done it this way doesn't mean we need to be, but let's understand what the root of the request is. All right, so with that, Counselor Denaco, are you looking to amend your motion then?
That would be what I'm hearing right now, Mr. Chair, so I would amend the motion to incorporate adding Jeffrey Guinta as an Associate Member to the Capital Planning along with the two permanent openings of Claversey and Calore.
Fair enough. And do I have a second to that amended motion?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair Santos, any further discussion? Seeing none before you then, the motion as it stands is the reappointment of Tracy Claversey and Daniel Calore to the Capital Planning Committee, and the addition of Jeffrey Guinta as an Associate Non-Voting Member of that Committee. So, seeing no further discussion, all those Members in favor, Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Denaco?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, seven to zero. That motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Next before us is the Disability Commission. We actually have the opposite issue here. We have three three-year openings, but only one applicant. The applicant is Lois Benjamin, who is currently on the Commission seeking a reappointment to it. With that, I will entertain a motion to that effect.
I move that we appoint Lois Benjamin to the Disability Commission.
May by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Denaco. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the reappointment of Lois Benjamin to the Disability Commission for a three-year term. We'll go through roll call. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Denaco?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes. And so we congratulate Lois Benjamin, as we do Daniel, Tracy, and Jeffrey from Capital Planning as well. Next, we have a Conservation Commission. We have two three-year openings for the Conservation Commission, and we have four applicants. We have Michael Owen, we have F. James Luciani, who's currently on the Commission. We have Warren Lasky, who's currently on the Commission, and we have Kenneth Alipidis. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for one or two applicants or appointees for this Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Warren Lasky back onto the Commission, and I'm also going to ask that the Board consider Kenneth Alipidis.
So do I have a second?
Second.
Second, was that?
Peter May, second. He beat me.
Peter May, second. All right, Peter May. All right, so the motion before you then would be the appointment of Warren Lasky and Kenneth Alipidis. I'll open it up for discussion. Okay, Counselor Denaco, do you have your hand up, or is that?
Yes, I did. I placed my hand up. As was mentioned earlier in this particular round of appointing people, it's a pleasure to see 36 applicants present their names for 29 positions. As far as my choice for Mr. Alipidis is, he actually has a background in conservation, whereas in the past, we really haven't had many members or many applicants have the background that was necessary for the position. I think we do need new blood in most of our Committees and Boards, and I think this is a great opportunity where we can get someone who is willing to put the effort in and has the background to do so. So, and I think Mr. Lasky's doing a great job as well, so that's the reason behind my recommendation.
Thank you for that, Mr. Denaco. Further discussion? All right, seeing none, then the motion before you is the appointment of, the reappointment of Warren Lasky to the Conservation Commission and the appointment of Kenneth Alipidis to the Conservation Commission.
Sorry, sorry. Can I just ask Sheri a question? Sorry, I couldn't find the raised hand button. Did the Chair give recommendations like for the other Committees?
Yes, there was one in there.
I can't seem to find it.
Conservation Commission?
You know what page it was in the handout?
Page 69.
There was, the recommendation of the Conservation Commission was for Jim Luciani as well as Mickey Lasky.
Okay, can we, can we take those votes separately then? Can we separate them? I just.
Well, there's actually a motion that's been seconded, so we'll have to, we'll have to vote on that first, or Counselor Denaco can change that. But the motion as it currently on the floor is for both people. So that could be defeated, but that's what's before us.
That's fine. I couldn't find the mute button in time, so that's fine.
Can I add a comment?
Of course.
Just to clarify, Marion, I think Mr. Luciani is the Chair, and did he write the letter? Or am I getting that wrong?
This was actually written by the Vice Chairman.
The Vice Chair.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, all right, so with that then, I will take a, because we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
Sorry, I had raised my hand.
Okay. Counselor Chines, you do or do not?
I did have a comment if you're continuing the discussion. I, you know, as I'm thinking about the, you know, the motion from Counselor Denaco, I'm, you know, mindful of the fact that, you know, we have a few qualified applicants, and I think, you know, for this Commission, similar to others, we have a little bit of an embarrassment of riches. You know, with that being said, in light of the recommendations from the Commission itself, as well as the service that Mr. Luciani's made, you know, I personally am a little reluctant to, you know, vote him off of the Conservation Commission in light of Mr. Alipidis, who's, I apologize, I'm probably butchering the pronouncement of his last name. You know, with that being said, if this Council does end up reappointing Mr. Luciani and Mr. Lasky to the Conservation Commission, I would ask maybe that they refer back to us any thoughts they have on, again, considering an Associate Member, given the obvious skill, talent, and background that we see in some of the other applicants.
Now, I believe, Mr. Mullin, that Conservation Commission may be statutorily set, the number, am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission is a creature of statute, and it is certainly reflected in our Charter as well. So we don't have the power to change the, the Town Council does not now have the power to change the number.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santos?
I think some of these are really difficult discussions, and we've, you know, we've had them in the past years, and I remember Phyllis Hough was one of the strongest advocates for sometimes bringing in new blood, which is not a bad thing. It doesn't detract at all from what Mr. Luciani has done, but I do think with the CONCOM and some conversations folks have had, a change in membership is not the worst thing in the world. In a perfect world, maybe we could expand it, but we can't because it's statutorily set. So, you know, we have someone else on there who's been on for 12 years, so is, there is some history and consistency. So, you know, we have done this before. We have had some turnovers because we have wonderful people step up to the plate. So I'm a little bit torn. You want to give someone who's been volunteering for 20 years certain respect, but we do want to have different perspectives on that Board, and I think what Mr. Alipidis brings is quite unique.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. All right, if I see, if I'm seeing no other discussion then, well, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote on that. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, just so we're absolutely clear, the motion that has been seconded and that has been discussed is the reappointment of Warren Lasky to the Conservation Commission and the appointment of Kenneth Alipidis. So with that, Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
No.
Counselor Denaco? Counselor Denaco?
I still haven't moved, yes.
Counselor Butt?
No.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
No.
Okay, Chairman Donbrowski, yes. So that is a four to three vote, and congratulations to those two appointees, and thank you to Mr. Luciano for his many years of service to the Conservation Commission. Next is the Council on Aging. There are three openings, but two applicants. Both are currently on the Council. The first is Florence Calore. The next is Elizabeth Ellis. I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of one or both of those applicants.
I move that we appoint both applicants to the Council on Aging.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Denaco. All right, so the motion before you is the reappointment of Florence Calore and Elizabeth Ellis, both to a three-year term on the Council on Aging. I'll take again a roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Denaco?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, seven to zero. Congratulations Florence and Elizabeth. The next is for the Cultural Council. We have one opening, and we have one applicant, Kathleen Kane. I'll entertain a motion for her appointment to the Cultural Council.
I'm moved. Second.
And moved by Vice Chair, moved by Counselor Denaco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the appointment of Kathleen Kane to a three-year term on the Cultural Council. Roll call votes. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Denaco?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Thank you for that, and we congratulate Kathleen Kane on her appointment to the Cultural Council. Next is the Fence Viewers Committee. We have one three-year term open, and we have one applicant, Dennis Clority, currently serving on the Committee. I'll entertain a motion for a reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Denaco. Any discussion? A motion before you, Counsel, is the reappointment of Dennis Clority to the Fence Viewers Committee. Roll call votes. Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Denaco?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Chairman Donbrowski, yes, and that's a seven to zero vote. Congratulations to Mr. Clority, and thank you for your work. The next is the Historical Commission, and this is one that I wanted to take a couple of minutes to speak with the Council on. Currently, the way that the Historical Commission is set up, all seven slots are up for reappointment at the same time, which doesn't make a lot of practical sense for a number of reasons, including continuity. So I would suggest to this Council that it would be a better practice for us to instead stagger these seven openings so that we would create ostensibly two one-year terms, two two-year terms, and three three-year terms. And then when the one-year or the two-year are up, they would become a three-year in rotation. But we need to stagger. In order to do that, we'd have to have appointments that are shorter in duration, at least first go around, and then once we get the rhythm of it, we can just have the three-year cycle, if that makes sense. There's, this is the only Commission Committee or Board, to my knowledge, that has this kind of odd structure in that it's seven reappointments every three years versus a staggered. So if that pleases this Body, I would entertain a motion to stagger these positions, and then we can assign the number of years per the applicant, because we only have seven applicants. And it's no reflection on the applicant, whether it's a one-year, two-year, or three-year, it's just a matter of when they would have to reapply in the first instance.
Point of view, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Denaco?
So, so we're going to try to initiate a one-year, two-year, and three-year as your recommendation, but we have four of the Members currently on the Commission with three potential additional Members to make up the seven. You're asking us now to choose three out of the four to be three-year Members?
Well, what I'm suggesting ostensibly is, if you think of it as, think of it as, there's one, there are two people that would have one year left on their term, two people that would have two years left on their term, and three people that would have three years left on their term. It's the same structure we have for our Town Council in terms of staggering. But yes, I am asking that we would assign just a term length to each of these folks. Really no rhyme or reason behind it, aside from if you're finishing out a three, what would be now a three-year term, then next year you'd be up for applying again for a three-year term, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I have a question to Steve. Is there a reason why it was a bulk of seven were voted every three years? Why this Commission is different?
My memory of this is that it was just the way it was done. One of those things that just never, never changed. We only have, what, four on there now? So it's kind of nice that we got up to seven people.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Let's say in this case, we could perhaps appoint all three of, three of these existing Members to a three-year term, the fourth existing Member to a two-year term, and then we could have the three new Members in two and one year and one in a year. But again, this just means that they would have to just reapply next year, presumably, you know, we're just staggering it, so.
This is Julie. Was this raised by the Committee as a problem?
It was not raised by the Commission, to my knowledge, no, but it is the one outlier. And when I was speaking with Madam Clerk about, when I was going through this, it didn't seem to make a lot of practical sense why we have a whole, you know, new slate potentially at all at the same time versus having it staggered, which has been, you know, traditionally how we've handled every other, you know, Commission Board and Committee.
And did we reach out to the Chair to propose this to them? Did they have any feedback?
I, I did not, no. I did not, I have not reached out to them, no. Again, it's within our, it's within our authority. It's not just kind of like setting it so it's consistent with all the others. Counselor Butt.
Yeah, I similarly was questioning whether you'd reached out to them. I also. Feel like it's a little odd when they, when they applied thinking that it was a three-year term and then all of a sudden we're going to say. It's actually a one-year or two-year term. And I'm just wondering if there's a way, you know, we approve them all and then we have a conversation with them. Maybe they self-identify. We tell them like, hey, you guys identify. But I feel like that's kind of odd that they applied for something for three years. And then all of a sudden, we're going to say just, hey, we're changing it up. Like. It would have been nice to discuss this before. And with the current.
I mean, I suppose another way of thinking about it perhaps would be rather than to give as a one-year, two-year, three-year, we could think about it as a three-year, four-year, five-year. And so someone who's, who's been on, you know, longer, then they have the five-year terms, because then again, the point is to stagger this. So however we want to go about that, whether we want to say one, two, three, or three, four, five, you know, I think we end up at the same, the same objective.
Does it, sorry. Does it make sense to kind of circle back to the chair to have them self-identify which terms they want to choose? And then at the next meeting, we can, you know, they can let us know, okay, these are the people that want the three years. These. There might be things going on in these folks' lives where they could, you know, more better identify than we could. And then we could vote for this board at our next meeting.
Yeah, I see no reason why we can't. I mean, you know, terms expire in April. We have another meeting in April. I mean, this is not crisis critical. But I do think that having more, having a better staggered structure in place ultimately in the long run is going to be better for us. But I know that Tom Counsel Mullen has his hand up as well. So.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just turned to Chapter 40, Section 8D, which is the statute establishing historical commissions. And it says, when a commission is first established, the terms of the members and alternate members, you can have alternate members here. Let's see, shall be so arranged that the terms of approximately one-third of the members and alternate members will expire each year. And their successors shall be appointed for terms of three years each. So I think the original sin here was that when this was established, we didn't follow that statute.
Why don't we do this? If it pleases this body, why don't we then table this for the moment? I'll go back to their chair and ask if there's any preference of the applicants.
Perfect.
I'll work with Madam Clerk and then we'll come back to this meeting. And if we have good indications of who wants to maybe fill what slots, you know, we can take it from there if that, that pleases this body.
Perfect. Thank you.
You need a motion on that?
Yes, if I could get a motion to table to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And a quick roll call vote on that. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselors Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And Counselor May.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chairman Dombrowski, yes, as well. So that puts us at seven to zero. All right, thank you for that. And, and. I think we'll be in better shape once we have that staggered. Next is the Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission is a bit unique in that there are different appointing authorities. Our authority as a town council is two. And we have a one for a term through 2023. And the second is. To fill an unexpired term through 2022. So we have two applicants. One is Benny Wheat, who currently sits on the commission. And the other is Sherry Okun, who is looking to apply. I might suggest as we have someone who's already on the commission that, that's seeking reappointment, we would slot them into the three-year term and the new person into the two, but I'll defer to this body.
I so move that suggestion that Benny Wheat gets moved to the slot that goes through 2023 and the new applicant to the two-year slot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Any discussion? I'd say none. And the motion before you is the, the reappointment of Benny Wheat to a three-year term on the Human Rights Commission and the appointment of Sherry Okun. To fill an unexpired term running through 2022. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselors, Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yeah. And congratulations to Benny and to Sherry. The next is the Permanent Building Committee. And we technically are. In a position to appoint two voting members, but this is where an issue of associate members again comes up. The chairman of that committee has reached out to us and asked that we appoint all of the applicants, there being five in total. Those applicants include Philip Brenzi, Chip Tarbell, who's currently on the committee, Wayne Hardicker. Timothy Demers, currently on the committee, and Marco Mochio, Marco Mochio, excuse me. And in speaking with. Mr. Mullen and Mr. Mayo about this request and anticipation of a number of projects we'll have going forward. One option we can consider here as well is the idea of associate members that would serve the same function. They would add a voice and perspective, but they would be non-voting. Again, these are different than alternates of the ZBA who may have a voting capacity. These are, these are associate members who again have. All the engagement of the committee, but are not voting. So in light of what the chair has asked for in that, I'll, you know, open it up to discussion that anyone may, anyone may have relative to. Changing that structure a bit to have these associate member add-ons. And Mr. Mayo, is there anything you want to add relative to that, too, knowing what projects are on the horizon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very hard-working committee. They've got. The Greenwood Roof that's underway, hopefully the Public Safety Building, hopefully the high school coming forward. They have very intense and. Very technical meetings. And I think it's good to have a, a group that's coming along and kind of learning the ropes because there's other projects coming on. So I would. I support Joe Bertrand's request to the board. I think it's, I think it's a good suggestion. I believe that this is fine after talking with Tom Mullen as well. And I support the, Mr. Chairman's, your movement in this direction as well. So thank you.
Counselor Dinoco. Counselor Dinoco.
I thought I hit it on.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is the current total on the permanent building committee? Do we have a number?
Madam Clerk, do we have that number handy? Madam Clerk is looking for that number.
Yes, I'm sorry. I believe there is 11.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Mr. Mayo, perhaps you could just speak, touch briefly upon how the Permanent Building Committee works once we have particular projects in place.
Well, they, they have. Sometimes weekly meetings with the project, with the owner's project manager, where they are meeting constantly going over bills that need to be paid, going over. Different items that come in. They, you know, in the beginning of the project, they're handling the hiring of the OPM, the hiring of the architect. Going through the plans and specifications, site visits, very hardworking board. I think many hands makes, makes life work. And I met some of the associates. Could be used to maybe do some site visits and report back and things like that. So they will be busy. They're a very busy board. I've done a lot of progress with them. The Galvin, the Walton School. And they'll be quite busy, all of them. And they're, they're a good group. So. I respect what Joe wants to do and ask him to get more people going along because it is pretty intense, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. And I will say that three projects that maybe on the horizon, one we know definitively is, is the Greenwood Roof. The Public Safety Building is, is, is up for consideration by the town, as will be the high school in the coming years. But we're already working on elements of that in the very, very stages at this point. All right. So with that, I will.
Have some pretty intense meetings with architects and things like that. I think we had one on December 23rd that I was. Asked to sit in on or some, some date like that. So they, they were pretty intense all the time. So this will be helpful to them.
I will say that, and I know Mr. Tarbell has been on permanent building for some time. Mr. Demers, I believe, is a newer addition to, I think, this, this is his first term. Mr. Mochio, I have worked with on the Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee. And Mr. Renzi has previously served on, on this, on this committee. And I'm not sure about Mr. Hardicker. I don't know if anyone knows. But with that, so I will entertain the will of this body. We can do a motion for the appointment of two voting members and three associate members. We can take it one by one. We can. Do as, as you please. I will point out that we do have current, we have two current members that are seeking to remain in place. Again, Mr. Tarbell has been on. Has experience. Mr. Demers is newer, so his perspective is, is more recent. And the other three as well could potentially be serving as associate members. What is the will of this body?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think I would suggest going with what Mr. Bertrand suggests in that appointing Mr. Tarbell and Mr. Demers. To the open slots and then the three other gentlemen. He said alternate, but we would say associate members. Is that correct?
That's right. I actually spoke with Mr. Mullen about this. And as, to not create any confusion, by, by not using the word alternate. We avoid any concerns about there being, you know, questions to whether they have the, the authority to be voting on projects. So associate is a safer term.
Perfect. So I would, I would go along with what Mr. Bertrand suggests on that.
All right. So in that case, then you are, your, your motion, as I understand it, is the reappointment of, of Mr. Tarbell and Mr. Demers as voting members. And the appointment of Philip Brenzi, Wayne Hardicker, and Mark Mochio as associate non-voting members. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, then the motion before you is the reappointment of Mr. Tarbell and Mr. Demers to the Permanent Building Committee and the appointment as associate members of Mr. Renzi, Mr. Hardacker, and Mr. Mochio. Roll call votes. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes, seven to zero. All right. Congratulations to those, those members. And thank you, Permanent Building Committee, for all of your hard work. Next, we have the Recreation Commission. There are three openings and four applicants. The applicants are Aaron McDonough, McDonough. Richard Stevens, who currently sits on the commission, Susan Hickey currently sitting on the commission, and Gerald Barrett also currently sitting on the commission. Again, we have three openings for three-year terms each. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for one, two, or three nominees. Vice Chair Santos.
Again, looking at Dan McGrath's enthusiastic, enthusiastic letter and knowing some of these folks. I would suggest appointing Jed Barrett, Susan Hickey, and Rich Stevens. To the board. They, some of them have served longer, some are fairly new. But I think Dan McGrath, who works with them very closely, is enthusiastically. Supporting appointing these three. And, and again, thanks to Ms. McDonough for putting her application in. And hopefully she'll continue to. Seek to volunteer. There are always looking for folks that go to their meetings and can help out as well. Thank you.
So Vice Chair Santos then has made a motion for reappointment of Richard Stevens, Susan Hickey, and Gerald Barrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor May. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you then would be the reappointment of Richard Stevens, Susan Hickey, and Gerald Berry, each to a three-year term on the Recreation Commission. Roll call votes. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Chairman Dombrowski, yes, vote of seven to zero. Congratulations and thank you, everyone, for your work and thank you, Ms. McDonough, for applying. And I hope you do reapply. Finally, is the Veterans Advisory Board. This was something that you may recall, Mr. Jay Panett had been before us. Several months ago, probably at this point. And he talked about some of the concerns that he had relative to the Veterans Advisory Board and perhaps making it a larger group. I did speak with Mr. Mullen about that concern. And there isn't a limitation, as, as this is an ad hoc new board, there's not a limitation to the appointments. The biggest challenge we have now is, is trying to get interest and trying to encourage folks to apply. So we do have two applicants, one, one of whom is currently on the board. And we can appoint them both. But going forward, I do think there are some, some outreach would be important for us as a body to try to build up this team because it's, they do important work. And we have a lot of veterans in town. And they provide a lot of good services. So. With that, I will entertain a motion for the reappointment of Rob Edinger and the appointment of Kristi Yentl, unless anyone has any. Other thoughts.
So moved.
Seconded by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Smith Galvin. Any discussion? Seeing none in the motion before you is for the, the reappointment of Mr. Edinger and the appointment of Kristi Yentl. I will do roll call votes. Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
All right. And Chairman Dombrowski, yes. So with a vote of seven to zero, congratulations to you both. I do number 13 on the agenda is constituent issues. This is the opportunity for members of the town council to raise any issues or concerns that have, that have been raised to them by residents. Nothing will be voted on this evening, but it may be added to a future town council meeting. With that, do we have anyone that has any constituent issues to be raising this evening? Okay. All right. I do number 14, Chairman's comments. I wanted to offer brief comments on, on just three items this evening. The first of which is, isn't. Something that's been ongoing for quite some time. And it is seeking to have Wakefield established and means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption. This is slowly but surely making its way through the legislature and it's great news for, for seniors. It's been a real priority of this body. I think I speak for all of us in saying that, to the extent we can have a seniors aging in place, that's a good thing. And we've, in the past, as a body, again, tried to offer different, different forms of, of tax relief to our seniors. This would be the latest step in that process. I will say that Mr. Mayo provided some very compelling testimony last spring at this point before the, it was the Finance Subcommittee, I believe, right, Mr. Mayo? Back last.
Revenue Subcommittee.
Revenue Subcommittee, sorry, Revenue Subcommittee back last June. And since that time, it's basically made its way, it's making its way through the process. I, I will credit Representative Wong with doing a lot on this front. He's been a very strong advocate for this. And we are making headway. I have invited the delegation or rescheduled the delegation to come to our next meeting on the 27th. So I'll allow Representative Wong to talk to us more about that at that point. But it's, it's some really exciting news. Again. I know last spring, we, our town administrator did a great job of, of presenting the reasons why it was important. And. I expect next meeting we'll have, you know, further details on that from Representative Wong. The second point is the. Yes, I'm sorry.
Add a brief comment and recognition as well for Representative Lippa Garabedian. I know in the brief time that she's been representing Wakefield, this has also been something that. I know she's spoken to a number of us on the council about and has made a priority in this sort of odd time to start a, a new role as a state. and has made a priority in this sort of odd time to start a new role as a state rep. And so certainly hope that, you know, with her and Representative Wong and Senator Lewis working together, we can get this taken care of sooner rather than later, particularly, I think, as we all understand the challenges for our seniors in town are getting greater and greater in light of, you know, what we expect the economic outlook to be.
Absolutely. No, certainly. And I look forward to welcoming Representative Lippa Garabedian to our next meeting, certainly. She has no doubt hit the ground running. I've been in communication with her on issues and she's been very responsive. So thank you for that, Counselor Chines. Seeing no further hands up. The next issue or item is the financial forecasting update. In my capacity as a liaison to the Finance Committee and specifically of financial forecasting, I had the opportunity to attend what was actually a public meeting last week of the Finance Committee Forecasting Subcommittee. And they do a lot of really important work. And I credit Chairman Dan Sherman for his years of forecasting. I know Counselor Chines, with your time on the Finance Committee, you know those forecasts and as do I from my time on Finance Committee. And they're really important and they help to really give us some more direction and guidance as we're making decisions both short and longer term. I will say that as far as what came out of that discussion, a lot of what-ifs and a lot of different scenarios. The Subcommittee is looking at the effects of this pandemic on our fiscal year 21 planning. I know that all the budgets have come before Town Council already. They've gone through Finance Committee as well. But, you know, depending on what kind of modeling you're doing, we could be looking at, you know, potentially a 10% reduction in local receipts, so, you know, food and lodging. And we could potentially be looking at a 10% reduction in state aid. We don't know. You know, those are just what-ifs. And so part of what the Subcommittee spent a lot of time on is looking at different scenarios, seeing how we avoid deficits, seeing how we can try to be proactive and be thoughtful about our spending as to not create, you know, issues for us in terms of sustainability of budgeting going forward. I know that I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Mayo on this front in recent weeks. And I know that he, along with his department heads, have been working very hard to determine, basically, how, you know, we can maybe rethink some of the budgets to better align with what could be lower, you know, tax receipts. Because we have restaurants that aren't open, we have hotels that are not renting out to guests really right now. And so that's an ongoing discussion. Again, there are a number of different scenarios. The consensus of some was that this is a blip in the radar and that we should be able to recover from this in rather short order, once we get this virus under control. Others were a bit more pessimistic in terms of where they thought the economy was going to be, kind of going longer term. So of course, everything comes back before the council. And we left off that meeting with Mr. Sherman, working through a number of different scenarios for everyone to consider. I will say that forecasting is nothing new. Certainly, Mr. Mayo does it with his team every year. I know, Mr. Mayo, you did it last fall and but for this COVID-19 situation, we would probably be pretty close to spot on with where you were projecting things. I know, again, we're looking at a bit of the deficit, potentially, depending on where our receipts land. But again, that would be based on, you know, local option and some state funding issues as well. So with that, Mr. Mayo, if you have anything to add to that, again, forecasting has been your forte for quite some time, working with Mr. Sherman and the rest of the team.
Yeah, I got to say that those meetings are very enjoyable. There's a lot of give and take and a lot of different perspectives, as those of you who were on the Finance Committee remember. I think the revenue side is something that is going to be quite hard to wrap around, our arms around. And we need to prepare for the best. And I'll be presenting to the council kind of recommendations, what we can do to maintain programs and to be sustainable going forward. One thing that we should be looking for when our reps come in on the 27th, I think it's the 27th is the date, is there a revenue consensus from the state? That'll be huge because the state is going to look at three buckets. They're going to look at where they think their revenues are going to be. They're going to look at whether they should use, how much of their rainy day fund they should use to help cities and towns. And what is the federal stimulus going to look at? How much of this can be used for local aid? So legislature should be coming out, maybe not by April 27th, but it'd be nice to get an idea of what their revenue consensus is going to be. Because one scenario we look at is we're pretty sure that we're projecting that for at least fiscal year 21, local receipts will be down from what we've been, what we anticipated. Because we were really going along very well there. That's about $1 million. Let's say 10% cut is about $1 million. If state aid also goes down, 10% was one of the items we're looking at, again, $1 million. That's quite a chunk on us that we need to think about going forward. And we talked, we had some give and take with the Finance Committee about some items we could look at, maybe delay some expenditures till kind of the dust settles in the fall. So I'll be putting a package together for the council to talk about that and to the Finance Committee. But there will be some reductions, there has to be. Or we could say we could wipe out our reserves, which I wouldn't suggest. The other item on this is new growth. We have done great as a community on new growth, fabulously. Is that going to continue? And that's something that we're going to have to think about going forward and how that affects us in the long run. But I think our goal is to make sure that we continue with programs, that maybe there's some new initiatives, new hirings that we don't do right away. We look at those as maybe adding things back in November. Remember, we have a town meeting in November that we could add things back in too. So that's kind of where we are. I think that Mr. Sherman, who does a great job for us, for, I told him we're going to double his salary for what he does. He's going to give us some different scenarios, which will show that forecasting, whether it's a 10% cut in aid and what have you, and how we go forward and how that goes forward years from now. Because we want to make sure that we have reserves, that we maintain that, to maintain our bond rating and what have you. So that's all coming down the pike. This is just kind of whetting your appetites for this fun stuff that'll be coming forward.
And I should say too that along those lines, we were quite nimble, especially under these circumstances. And I've often said that I think we've been ahead of a lot of other communities in terms of dealing even with this crisis. And part of that was, I know, Mr. Mayo, you had been asked from, you know, in terms of our bond rating, you had already been, you received a questionnaire asking what sorts of steps we're taking as a community in anticipation of how things might change. And so the fact that we're able to have those proactive discussions with a really solid group of incredibly talented people puts us in such a better position as compared to a lot of other communities because it's showing that we have the forethought to know that there could be an impact, you know, to this, to our local economy, our local receipts. And how are we, you know, adjusting? And I think, you know, that helps us speak to how we're able to maintain the AAA bond rating because we have that kind of proactive approach to it. So I do want to thank the Finance Committee for all their hard work. It was a really, really impressive group of folks that were gathered together, having a really important session. And I think to Mr. Mayo's point, there was a lot of give and take. You know, people are saying, what about this? What about that? And it was different scenarios being talked about. And we'll know, we'll have forecasted out, you know, what each scenario will end up meaning for us and we'll be able to proceed accordingly. So I just wanted to update the council on that. And I think that's, this is a good example of where we've been having, you know, great synergy with Finance Committee through the entire budgeting process. And now we're looking at forecasting as well, obviously. It's important. But rather than us, you working in different silos, I think the cross-pollination has been really helpful this entire budget cycle and season in a way that we've not done it previously. So more to come on that. And finally, I just wanted to remind everyone about the 2020 Census. I'm sorry, Counselor Chines?
Thank you. So just in light of sort of your comments around collaboration between the Finance Committee and the Town Council and I think the somewhat extraordinary circumstances that we're in. You know, I did ask at our last meeting that Mr. Sherman's forecast model, the latest version of that be circulated to the Town Council and would ask Mr. Mayo if we could take care of that sort of well in advance of April 27th so we all have a time to look at that. I think, you know, this is certainly a period in time where, you know, it would behoove all of us to really understand those numbers before we start talking about the different scenarios that we'll be reviewing on the 27th. And, you know, would ask that that gets circulated well in advance of the packets so that we've got time to play with that.
As soon as you get it, I'll get it. As soon as I get it, you'll get it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
It's definitely a work in progress. And that discussion will probably go beyond the 27th as well. You know, it's a sort of thing where we'll have better insight two weeks from now in terms of what a direction we think we're heading in. We may have some, you know, better indication of whether we're looking at weeks or months or, you know, when we'll start to have the rolling return, which, you know, I think is really anyone's guess at this point. But certainly, and Mr. Sherman, I know, has any number of scenarios for us, so that would be helpful, certainly. Finally, I just wanted to remind everyone about the 2020 Census. You probably have received some of this mail in your mailbox already. I know a number of you have probably already completed the census. And in fact, our census response rate is a 61.6% as compared with Stonem, which is a 60.5%. So we are leading Stonem right now. And I know Counselor Chines and Counselor Smith Galvin were both with me when we were having some fun with our select board several weeks back, when we were talking about the dodging for dollars. And it's always a good ribbing when we can point out, you know, how Wakefield is better than Stonem. So to the extent we can do that in this instance, too, that would be great. It's super easy to complete the census. Just go to 2020census.gov. It takes just a few moments, but it is huge in terms of our representation, in terms of our funding. And there's a lot of real important benefits to everyone being counted. So please be sure to do that if you've not already. And please, whatever you do, complete it before April, before May 14th so that we can be sure that, in fact, we have beat Stonem once again. So with that, I will, if there are no questions on the census, I'll move on to item number 15. Item 15 is matters unanticipated for the agenda prior to the 48-hour notice requirement. I have not heard from anyone. I'm assuming there are none. If that's the case, we'll move on then to item number 16, which is announcements and acknowledgements. Again, this is your opportunity, Town Councillors, Town Council, Town Administrator, and Madam Clerk, to offer any acknowledgements or recognition or announcements of any sort. So with that, do we have anyone looking to make announcements? I know that there are less events come these days, but there's still a lot of good stuff going on nonetheless. Counselor Butt?
Yeah, I have my hand raised. Thank you. Just two announcements. One, what we were talking about earlier, Steve. So as we talk about events that are canceled or postponed, the Sweetser Lectures were canceled for this year. And some of us had already bought tickets and bought programming and we immediately, thanks to the town, got a check back, which was great. But I'm wondering if there was a way for us to donate that to the emergency fund or keep it for next year? And that's like a conversation.
I can answer that. The Sweetser Lecture Series, they sent those back to everybody of their own accord. So we didn't, we didn't do it. They wanted to do it.
It was so quick.
I know. I tried to talk them out of it. I said, what if you cava in the fall, hold on to the money? But they wanted it off their plate, so that's up to the individuals.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Just an opportunity of maybe.
Yeah, I know.
Emergency fund.
I agree.
Yeah, so, yeah, got to check right away from that. And then the other thing, as we think about events, I just want to remind everyone looking forward to a happier time is that our Community Garden, the lottery is open. It's still open if you want to go and send Dan McGrath an email. But the lottery is going to be live tomorrow. So Facebook Live at 10:00 a.m., he's going to pick the spots. We have over 58 folks who registered for the lottery, which is pretty impressive in a first-year pilot program. And we don't know when that ribbon cutting will happen. Everything's been postponed a little bit, but the Facebook Live, I think the first time we've probably ever done anything like that, will be tomorrow at 10:00. So check that out to see who gets a spot on the Community Garden and see if I get a spot and Steve's mom gets a spot and anyone else that entered the lottery. So that's it.
Very exciting stuff. Counselor Smith Galvin? Counselor Smith Galvin?
Um, I mostly just had a, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? No? Oh, I have a bad internet. It's okay. Can you hear me? Okay, my internet went out for a second. Um, I just wanted to say, I think it's so great that we're doing these Zoom meetings and that it's not just the Town Council, but everybody is doing it. I'm wondering, will they be posted on like the website? So like the ZBA met last week, is that going to get posted?
The ZBA meeting, I believe, was sent right to WCAT.
Forget it.
So it is, it is, can be viewed.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. And in fact, it has, it has already.
But can that also be posted on the website? Maybe I'll reach out to Jen. Okay.
Yeah.
You can get it back. Yeah. Honestly, why not? Sure. Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick things. You know, again, you know, COVID-19 has sort of laid waste to a lot of the best-laid plans. As folks will remember, we talked a few months ago about putting together a vision and value statement for the community. Obviously, that work has then sort of paused, given the situation we're in and given the challenge of kind of getting people together in an interactive way to talk about their vision and values for the community. So I did just want to mention that it is something that's sort of been put on the back burner for now. But my hope is that once we get past that, we'll be able to have some really good engagement from residents and others in town to try to get that process, get that process going. I'd say before the coronavirus outbreak hit, I had gotten some really good responses from different commission and boards in town on sort of representation on that committee. Really wanted to credit Communications Manager Jenny McDonald for help supporting that. And so again, look forward to getting that back on track once we're in a more normal environment. Other things that I did want to mention, you know, we've talked a lot about the Emergency Fund and the Food Pantry, which are really important resources for people in town. But I also did want to highlight the Interface Program that we have that does connect residents to support resources for behavioral health and substance use issues. You know, this is a tough time for a lot of people. And, you know, I think, you know, all of us are struggling in many ways in terms of dealing with both sort of the global events around us, but also just the challenge of not being able to see our friends and family and loved ones. And so I really just want to make sure that folks in town know about that resource and know that that's available and that that can be a really important help in a time like this when the usual ways, I think, in which we have for coping with difficulty are just unfortunately not available to us. Finally, last thing I just want to mention is I am attempting to do virtual office hours on Wednesday and credit to my colleagues, Counselors Butt and Smith Galvin for doing this before on Facebook Live. I'll be trying that on Wednesday at 6:00. And my apologies to anyone who participates in that, whose questions I don't answer because I can't figure out the technology, but I'm going to give it a shot. So please join me at 6:00 Facebook Live on Wednesday.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Do you have any further comments, announcements? You know, all right, seeing none, I did just want to take a moment to certainly recognize all of our first responders. They have incredible task, you know, right now and they've been handling it just amazingly. I also want to recognize our healthcare professionals as well. They are working 24/7 to try to help us. And we can all do our part with social distancing. It's so incredibly important. It's a small thing that we can do, but it makes a huge impact. And we are in the mitigation phase of this pandemic and we all can play a role in that, certainly. So I encourage you to do everything that you can. And I also want to recognize the other essential workers. We have a lot of other folks who are delivering food, who are preparing food, who are working in the grocery stores, who are going and buying the groceries in many instances, who are doing a lot of the things that, who are working in the UPS store, working, delivering our mail, all the sorts of things that are able to still happen. And we just kind of sometimes don't notice because we've just taken so much for granted. And in these times, it's not a time to take anything for granted. So I want to recognize all of them as well. There's a lot of essential personnel that works in town that is often putting themselves at potential health risk, you know, in order to make sure that they can follow through on the functions. And I want to recognize our GPW and our Town Hall employees. I know that Mr. Mayo has put a lot of safeguards into place and we have a skeleton staff. Nonetheless, they are working as hard as if these were normal times. So, you know, we thank them for that as well. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and I will entertain a motion in a second.
So moved. So moved with one comment. I just want to also thank the teachers because as someone who's teaching remotely, it is life-sucking. It is exhausting physically, technologically. It's just so much tougher, I think, than we thought it would be. It's a different way of teaching. So I really want to thank, Wakefield is in the forefront of this remote learning. They put that plan in place. So thank you all for taking care of our children. And move to adjourn.
And can I just add before I second that, as the parent of four children in the Wakefield Public School, I don't think there is any parent in town with kids in the schools who don't understand how hard teachers work after trying to support their kids through this process. And I want to echo, you know, Vice Chair Santos's comment that, you know, our town was so well-prepared for this relative to others. The fact that we're actually able to give both our teachers and our students who desperately needed an April vacation next week is something that I'm proud of. So with that, I'll second the motion.
I should just add too that we have become a model in some respects. I mean, our Town Administrator has gotten, I know, calls from other communities to see how we're doing what we do with our schools. So it's really a testament to our school department and our teachers are amazing. Absolutely. All right, so I have a motion in a second. So we'll just do a quick roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Good night. Councillor Chines?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Councillor May?
Yes.
And Councillor Dinoco? And Councillor Dombrowski, yes. So with that, I adjourn this meeting for this evening. Our next meeting is Monday, April 27, 7:00 PM. It will again be by Zoom. I thank everyone for watching tonight and be well, Wakefield. Good night.